Well, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, April the 14th. Happy to have everybody here. Before we get started, just a couple of quick announcements. If you have a cell phone, if you would, turn it to silent at this time, or even better, turn it off. Either way is fine. And also, if you want to be heard on an item today, and you have not yet filled out one of these sheets of paper that are out front on the table, you can grab one, fill it out, hand it to staff, and at the appropriate time, I'll call on you. As we move through the agenda, there'll be an opportunity for you to be heard on that item. And when you come up, please give us your name and address for the record to start. And then we'll give you basically five minutes to tell us anything you want to about an item on today's agenda. We do reserve the right to limit comments if they're redundant, or they're off-topic, or something we've already heard. So with those little things to get started, or those little housekeeping items, we'll get started on the agenda. And our first order of business is to receive the minutes from the March 24, 2022 meeting. If there's no discussion from commissioners on those minutes, I'd take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we receive the minutes of the March 24, 2022 meeting.
Okay. I have a motion to receive the minutes. I'll take a second on PrimeGov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available. There it is. All votes should be cast. And the minutes are received. Next item on the agenda today are continuance requests. We have a number of those. Mr. Butler?
Yes, uncontested requests. Item 25, Case C-7388, defer to April 28. Item 26, Case SPUD 1386, request to defer to April 28 as well. Item 27, Case SP557, defer to May 12. Item 28, PUD 1887, defer to May 26. Item 29, Case PC10799, defer to May 26. Item 30, Case PUD 1814, defer to July 14. And Item 31, Case SPUD 1377, is withdrawn.
Okay. Is there anybody who wanted to be heard on any of those items today? All right. Seeing none, if there's no discussion from commissioners, I'll take a motion on the continuances as read.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the continuances as read.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the uncontested continuance request. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And those continuances are approved. Next item is our new request. I know we have one. Mr. Butler, you want to read that one?
Yes, this is Item 23, Case PC10798, request to defer to May 12.
Okay. Is there anybody here that wanted to be heard on that item today? It's Item 23 on today's agenda. All right. Seeing nobody, if there's no discussion from commissioners on that item or concerns, I'll take a motion to continue that request.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue PC10798 to the May 12 meeting.
All right. I have a motion to continue PC10798 to May the 12th. It's been seconded by Commissioner Clare. Please cast your votes. And that item is continued. Next item on our agenda is our consent dockets. There are three items there, one of which I believe we need to pull. But go ahead and read those, Mr. Butler. Yeah, I mean, we'll just remove it since it's on the agenda.
Right. Case, Item 1, Case PC10803, application to rezone 1424 Northwest 33rd Street from R1 to R2. Item 2 is Case C-7427, final plat of Fieldstone Section 4, located east of South County Line Road and south of Southwest 44th. And Item 3, Case C-7430, final plat of the Tributary. And this is located south of Northeast 122nd Street and east of Northeastern Avenue.
If I can get which item you want to speak about, do I get a prize?
Sure.
Item 3.
Congratulations.
What's the prize?
David's going to take you to dinner.
That's not a prize. Go ahead.
We would like to request a two-week continuance on this one. There were questions about the site distance on the property. We went, we've marked it, staff reviewed it, and I think there are still some concerns about the location. So rather than attempt to address it in this forum, we'd like to take the two weeks, work with traffic, and see if we can come up with a solution that works for everybody.
Okay. Did all commissioners receive the email that was sent today regarding Mr. McCubbin from Traffic's comments on this item?
Yes.
All right. Well, I tell you what, let's do, let me deal with the consent address, and then I'll, we'll pull Item 3, we'll hear it first, and then we'll grant the continuance, if that's okay.
Sure. And if it's possible, can that email be sent to us?
Yes, staff can send the email. I can give them my copy if they need one.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. You bet. Let's, let's just pull Item 3 from the consent docket. Would anybody like to be heard on any of the other two items that are on our consent agenda today, Items 1 and 2? I believe those were on the screen, but there's no, nobody here on those are no comments or commissioners, I'll take a motion on the consent docket removing Item 3.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve of the consent docket except for Item 3.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the consent docket on today's agenda. It's been seconded by Commissioner Clare, accepting Item 3. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and those items are approved. Next item on our agenda is items requiring separate vote, and we will take Item number 3 in turn, so it's first. Mr. Butler, you want to read that one more time?
Yes, Item 3, Case C-7430, final plat of the Tributary, located south of Northeast 122nd and east of Northeastern Avenue.
Okay. And we have a request from the applicant to continue the item. Did you say May the 12th is good for you? Mr. Zizao, Mr. Zizao's in agreement with the 12th. So if there's no discussion from commissioners, I'll take a motion to continue the item to May the 12th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I move that C-7430 be continued to the May 12 meeting.
Okay. I have a motion to continue Item 3, C-7430. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is continued to May the 12th. Next item on the agenda is Item number 4. Mr. Butler?
This is Case V-28, application to, requesting a variance to Sections 3.4.1. A of the subdivision regulations for the final plats of Wheeler District Phase 1 and Wheeler District Phase 2, located south of West I-40 Highway and west of Southwestern Avenue.
Good afternoon. Mark Zizao with Johnson &amp; Associates, Winnie Sheridan Avenue. This is a request to vary essentially the number of lot splits that would be permitted for the Wheeler District, for the existing plats. In an attempt to be flexible in the development, large lots were platted, and they've now come back to, to split those to allow for additional homes to be built. And I think what that ended up causing was confusion and additional replats of replats, which was not necessarily the intent. So you can see the, the block in tan was actually replatted. There was a lot more going on, on that block. But the remaining lots in blue are what we're asking to allow for additional lot splits to occur. When we think about plating, it's to make sure that all the infrastructure is in place, everything has proper frontage. All of that has been met, all of the infrastructure is in. So particularly what caused this, on the northern portion of that, it's called the Wheeler shop homes, they're live-work units, residential up above retail. They're seeking to split that lot to allow for six more of those to be constructed. The subrags say that a property cannot be divided into more than three lots. So that, that's what led us here. We are working, our firm has now been engaged on Phase 3, so we're working through this to make sure that this has not become an issue on everything north of what is on the screen.
Got it understood. This is Commissioner Heismas Ward. He's not here. I'm not aware of any objection. I don't have anybody sign up to speak on this item. Because of how technical this is in terms of the plat, you know, the plat aspect and staff support, I don't have any issues. Any commissioners have questions for the applicant on this one or concerns? Is there anybody that wants to be heard today on Item number 4, which is V-28? Okay. Well, if there's no discussion from commissioners on it, I'd take a motion. And we just need a motion on the approval of the item, which is a variance item, but it will require all six votes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve of V-28.
Okay. I have a motion to approve V-28, which is a variance to Section 3.4.1A of the subdivision regulations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Clare. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. The item variance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with your project. Next item is Item number 5. Mr. Butler?
Yes, this is Case PC10804, application to rezone 12224 Southwest 29th Street from R1 to C3.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an application for C3 at the hard corner of Southwest 29th and Check Hall Road. As the commission's aware, this is an area of the city that is developing very quickly, spurred in large part because of the turnpike in close proximity. A lot of residential neighborhoods that have been platted but are not yet existing to the east and to the west that are at R1 level or even higher in some instances. So commercial at the corner is what you might expect to find in this area. So, you know, in, in keeping with the chairman's routine comments, we're going to try to generate money for schools and, you know, the city via sales tax. So with that, the staff does recommend approval. It is consistent with the conference of plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Box. This item is in Ward 3, so I'll just kind of kick off my thoughts on it in the absence of a Ward 3 commissioner. But the only thing about this item, and I relayed this to Mr. Box, that gives me any, you know, concern is, this is a straight zoning application. We had platted this corner not terribly long ago, and now we're going to introduce commercial. So we have this issue over which piece is going to develop first, and is, does the house get built, and then all of a sudden the gas station shows up, which is allowed by the application. I have no objection to commercial at the corner, just generally speaking. And I, as I told Mr. Box, I wish that our new development code was further along, where I had more comfort. But there are things that are missing from this because it's a straight zoning application that give me pause. The first one is, you know, normally we would implement like a 50-foot dumpster separation for commercial, we would do 150 feet for drive-throughs, and there'd be some sort of a landscape buffer, which I think, you know, Mr. Box said, I want to give him a chance to share that, is that there is one because there's R1 adjacent, there's an automatic code requirement, you know, which is not something we hear a lot. So did you, do you have that language?
Yeah, so the, the code contemplates the potential mitigation measures when you have commercial next to single family. So the code would require a site-proof fence, it would require step-down in height as you're adjacent to R1 single family, and it would require a five-foot landscape buffer up against the, the edge. And so you're going to have site-proof screening and a landscape buffer with points required within that landscape buffer to ensure that there, you know, would be compatibility between the two. There are, you know, and if you think of, of applications like this, there are often times when staff will recommend a PUD in these types of instances. And they have not done so here. And so to your, to your point that a home may come in, if this were approved and a home did come in, they would be on notice and have the ability to look at the public records to see they're buying a home next to an area of land that is zoned commercial and, and what that means. Frankly, it's easier, I would think, for the public to see that it's Zone C3 and go figure out what that means than it would be if it was an SPUD and trying to figure out what that means. So I believe the code handles the situation. In fact, there are specific requirements under the landscaping portion of Chapter 59 as it relates to C3 next to R1. We don't seek any variances, we won't seek any variances, so we believe it to be adequately handled through the code.
Commissioners' comments? Okay. Is there anybody who want, I don't hear anybody sign up to speak. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on PC10804? Okay. Seeing nobody, I'll take comments, or if somebody wants to make a motion, I entertain it, but...
Happy to make the motion if, if we're all clear on this. I move that we recommend approval of PC10804.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PC Okay, I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10804, it's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge, please cast your votes. The item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item number six.
This is case PC 10806, application to rezone 2941 East Britton Road from R1 to C 3.
PC 10806, applicant I have listed is Jake Minton. Okay, as a courtesy, we'll bump it to the end of the, today's agenda, and hear the item at the end. So we'll move on to item number seven.
This is case PC 10808, application to rezone 7601 South Shields Boulevard from I-1 to I-2.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This application for I-2, we believe to be consistent, if you look at the map before you, we are bordered by I-2 on the north, the east, and the south, so I-2 next to I-2, we believe to be consistent, staff does recommend approval, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Box. Commissioner Privet, this is your ward, sir, so I'll let you lead off our comments, questions for the applicant?
I have zero questions.
Okay.
It's pretty appropriate, so...
That's not very many. Anybody else have questions for the applicant? All right, is there anybody here who wants to be heard on PC 10808? All right, I'll just say for the purposes of just the record that it's, it is a very straightforward application in my mind, it's surrounded by a lot of other industrial uses, and it's kind of a little industrial thoroughfare through here, to be honest, so it seems pretty appropriate to me. I think that was the way you saw it, so if you're ready to make a motion, Commissioner Privet, I'll take it.
Yep, I'll move to approve or recommend approval of PC 10808.
Okay, I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10808, it's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle, please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. An item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project. Next item on today's agenda is item number eight.
This is PUD 1846, application to rezone 12610 North Mustang Road from RA to PUD 1846.
Applicant present? Applicant on this one is Aaron Winters. All right, we'll bump this one to the end of the agenda.
Weird.
It is strange. So we'll move on to item number nine.
Item nine is case PUD 1889, application to rezone 9211 Southeast 44th Street from R1.
Good afternoon, Mark Zizao with Johnson &amp; Associates, Winnie Sheridan Avenue. This case should look fairly familiar, a straight rezoning application was filed, you all heard it several months back, and requested that a, the applicant come back with a PUD since that time, the applicant has engaged with us to file a PUD. And so that's what we've done, this is a conceptual site plan, there is no current end-user for the property, but we believe that the proposed use is appropriate for the area. So to talk to that a little bit, we've discussed this with staff, this is an area where residential would not be permitted due to the airport environs overlay and the proximity to Tinker, so it seems appropriate then that for someone to utilize their property in a way that would be consistent with the future potential development of the area, likely being commercial and industrial uses. So when we filed this PUD, we specifically put in there increased setbacks, particularly on the, along the north border of 100 feet, we included screening and additional landscaping, a mix of existing trees and newly planted trees on 25-foot centers along any property that is a residential use. So we sought to mitigate some of those concerns that were initially, initially raised by the neighbors who showed up and protested. Jessica in our office did reach out to one of the neighbors, it was expressed that unless, in seeking a neighborhood meeting, in response to that, we were told that unless we could come in with a specific project with specific details, they, that he was not willing to meet, and if we were to meet, we would still have protests, because they don't want to see this developed with anything other than residential. So that was relayed, an attempt to have the neighborhood meeting was sought. With that, we think we've addressed the previous comments at the planning commission meeting, be happy to answer any questions, I believe there are neighbors here that would like to speak, but we would seek for your approval, there are no TEs.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zizao.
Thank you.
Mark, the east side pretty much is all trees, right? Since every one of those is residential?
On the east side, yes, and so you can see where the houses are and how much land is in between us?
Yeah.
With the exception of the lot along 44th.
Yeah, okay, and I'm sure we got somebody signed up.
I do have one person signed up, but do you have other questions for the applicant? Are you good?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I do have one person who signed up to speak, Don Alexander.
Sorry, I couldn't hear a lot of what he said, so I may be repeating some of my concerns.
Totally fine. Could you give us your name and address for the record?
Don Alexander, 9228 Southeast 36th Street.
Thank you, sir.
Which is, we're north of the property, under question. I was here last December, and essentially you guys advised that they come back with a PUD, which they now have, have, have in front of you. I read the PUD, and it's actually just the second verse of the same song, they're wanting to chase the zoning from R1 to I-2, okay? So there's really nothing new here, there's nothing to be reviewed, and so what I would suggest is that they need to come back with some kind of proposal, at least, as to how they would want to develop the property. Now, carrying on, this property's been zoned R1 since 1945, okay, and we wanted to stay R1, okay? Just like on the west side of Tinker, it's, on the other side of Tinker, it's all single-family on that side of the Tinker. Good planning, in my opinion, suggests not having industrial next to residential, that's, that's like living in Houston, okay? So you don't want to create Houston problems. The property, our property, has been in our family for 74 years, okay? And my wife, she would be here to comment a lot about this, but she had a prior commitment and can't be here, but she grew up on the property, this is, this was her home as a kid and all that kind of stuff, so she, she's lived there. This, the, the only property in the area is residential, there's no industrial property other than that which fronts Douglas, okay? That on the, on the east side of Douglas. Prior attempts to change zoning to industrial by other R1 property locations in the area in the past have been denied or withdrawn, I'm not exactly sure one or the other, but there's been other attempts to do this, this change of zoning from the R1 to I, and just, it doesn't work. I-2 zone apparently permits over 36 different activities, okay? I have no idea what is even contemplated, there's been no discussion of that, that's basis of why they need to come back with what they want to do, as opposed to, it could be the whole world, okay? 36 different things that they might be allowed to do. Then, a new topic is that the current zoning includes the AE1 Airport Environs Zone 1 Overlay District, and the PUD doesn't address the history or the requirements of this overlay, and it seems like it needs to, because that seems to be a very important item. We understand, okay, it's our understanding, that we're only allowed to have one residence on our property, okay? Or we can rebuild, we can tear it down and build a new house, but we can't have a second resident, we can't divide the property as was done before the AE1 was put on originally to have a second residence on, on the acreage. So in other words, there's nothing, there's nothing new unless it's a, a permitted, unless it's, unless it's a rebuild, okay? That's what I understand of the AE1, now, maybe there's more to it, I don't know. Permitting the applicants to build one or more new structures, okay, under the AE1 seems unfair, compared to us, other people that are living in that area, in that we're restricted from having a, a new second residence, we, you know, we, we can't do that, so the idea of building something new at an, on a different location under this AE1, it would be an inconsistent treatment, seems unfair. Then, I understand the AE1 was put on originally to help keep Tinker here, because there was a threat of it being closed because of the airplane crashes back in the, you know, there's been a history of airplane crashes, but there was a particularly bad one, I guess, in the 60s or 70s, and AE1, it, is my suspicion, was put on at that point in time as a result, because the Air Force was concerned about safety, okay? Because there had been a crash there on the north end of the run, north of, on the north side of, of the runway, north of I-40, and so essentially, my understanding is the city, the county, whoever it was, wound up buying all the housing.
60 seconds, Mr. Alexander, just so you know.
What's that?
60 seconds, just so you know.
Okay, I'm just about done.
You're fine, just let me know.
So, the, the, that crash gave rise to the need for protection of the area of, for safety for Tinker, and that was, that was the point in time that there was consideration to closing Tinker, and so there was a pretty significant concern, I think. Then the other thing we don't know, we don't know if Tinker was even noticed on this application, okay? And there, I think they would probably be within the 500-foot thing that you mentioned to me in December, okay? It seems like they should be, because of the prior history and all that kind of thing. It's pretty entor, pretty important topic, seems like to me, to make sure that we're not creating any kind of upset in connection, particularly with the Tinker. I think the original thing, my suspicion is, the original thing was, was to freeze development, nothing new unless it's a rebuild, okay? And that was, and, and that was from a safety's point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander, I gotta have you wrap up.
Okay, so, the only other remaining comment would be, if, if this permitted to be, to be rezoned, then there's, that's gonna be a floodgate to allow other area properties there to be rezoned as well, and we don't want to see that happen, it's, it's a rural area, it's a residential area, and so we'd like it to stay R1.
Okay, we appreciate your comments and your time, and thank you for coming down today very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Alexander's the only person I had sign up to, oh, I'm sorry, I do have one, one other person, my apologies, Emmy Samuels?
Never mind.
It's okay, you sure?
Question was answered.
Okay, all right, well, appreciate you being here as well. So those are the only two people I've signed up to speak, is there anybody else who wants to be heard, public comment-wise, on PUD 1889? Okay, just real quick, I do want to respond to a couple of comments that Mr. Alexander made, and I want to make sure you can hear me, okay? So if you can't, tell me, okay? But, just a couple clarifying points, based on the staff report we have, that's different from what we reviewed for the meeting in December, there are limited uses here, there are a number of uses that are not permitted within I-2, you alluded to the 36 uses that were allowed, this has been further restricted, and those uses are outlined in our application. Our staff report actually alludes to that, and I'll come back to that. The AE1 overlay you alluded to, you're right, it would prevent new single-family uses from developing in this area, so this area is prevented from developing in terms of single-family, which I think is an important part of what will ultimately be our discussion about the use of this land long-term, so that's something I wanted to mention to you. The PUD modifications from the I-2 base, let me just read you from the staff report, so you're aware of what we've all read and been presented by the city staff?
Yeah, it wasn't in the staff report, I was able to download and read.
It's the staff report that I've got, and it is published to public record on, on the website at OKC.gov, for the agenda materials, it's out there. So it says, let me just read you a couple things, the first thing says that new building, new single-family residential uses are prohibited in the AE1 zone, and this property is subject to an AE1 overlay. It does say the request for industrial uses is consistent with the uses and zoning to the west along the South Douglas Boulevard corridor, provided the development is deemed compatible with airport and base operations, we've not received any comments from Tinker, I am certain they were notified. The proposal also triggers potential compatibility issues relating to building scale, traffic, and operational impacts where adjacent to residences on the east and south, that is precisely why when it came in as a straight I-2 application, we said, eh, you need to adjust this, do a PUD, come back. Some of those changes that have evolved since then are then listed, and it says, this application has been amended since first being submitted, that requires a 100-foot setback on the north, a 25-foot setback on the east, screening with a 15-foot landscape buffer where adjacent to a residential use, restricting sign height and prohibits EMD signs, and it eliminates some uses that would otherwise be allowed. So those are the changes that have been made as a result of the application being changed from a base zoning request of I-2 to PUD 1889. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that in the staff report. So I don't have any issue with any of the uses that remain, I don't know if other commissioners have looked at that or have different feelings or thoughts, thank you so much, Cindy, that's a copy of the staff report for you, sir. But I'm, I'm open to comments from other commissioners at this point, just to clarify, the signage, which has been amended, is 12 feet in height and a maximum of 100 square feet, that was, that would be much less than what would be allowed by code in I-2, so that's one of the things I wanted to point out. Any other commissioners have comments or thoughts on this one?
The one use that kind of stuck out to me was automotive auction, that's the first time I've seen that one.
Yep.
What does that allow? Is that, you know, outdoor auctions, are we indoors, or, you know?
It's a great question, I don't see that use unit very often, JJ, could you provide some light there, I don't have my use unit book handy.
Yeah, it'd be a typical auction situation, either indoor or outdoor.
Got it.
Could be both.
Let's delete that one.
Yep.
Okay. And, Mr. Chair, if I may, one thing that may help appease the neighbors, with the PUD, we're also agreeing to a specific plan stage, so when there is more detail on what's coming before you, there will be another application with a public hearing, so that they can see exactly what's being proposed and be able to speak at that time.
Am I correct that they are not, no, no, I don't think they're noticed, though, on specific plan applications, are they? Somebody, I don't think they are.
It is correct, there's not a public notice sent out, but it is a public hearing.
Got it, understood, you're gonna have to come back to us, and basically, basically that process, Mr. Alexander, is to demonstrate that what they're plan, how they're planning to develop the property is in line with the underlying PUD, that it, it matches the requirements outlined in the PUD.
Yeah, they need to come back with what they want to do.
Yeah.
They will, they will.
And they will, they will have to do that.
But, but am I correct, we wouldn't be able to revisit the uses, though?
Nope.
Because it would be in the PUD.
We would not be able to revisit the uses.
So we definitely need to address all that.
Yep, and that's why I brought it up, I just wanted to make sure that other commissioners had taken the time to look through those uses, to make sure that there's nothing there that creates any consternation for them, I think the auto auction was a good one, Commissioner Privet, I mean, outside of that, a lot of this is stand on, standard industrial fare, quite candidly. Some of the other use units, and one thing I should have mentioned in my comments to Mr. Alexander, but I didn't, but one of the things that's changed here dramatically in very recent time is the, the approved closure of Douglas Boulevard has also dramatically changed how this area is going to be developed and exist long-term, so that's something else that's really in the back of my mind about how this property's going to be used in the future, so, in fact, you can see the CE 1057 right there on the screen, is where the closure starts, so that's where the road closure is.
So, what, under this AE1?
Could you go to that microphone right there, Mr. Alexander, because there's some folks at home that want to hear your comments?
Under the AE1, what are you permitted to build new?
Restricts residential development, they don't want people living there.
Well, that's my point, you know, so...
I understand.
You're limiting that to just residential, it's not anything else?
Right.
You can build other stuff new, okay?
Yep, they, they don't want people living there, and that's, and that overlay, of course, is not before us, that was put in place.
Well, I mean, you know, they don't want people living there, because they don't want the planes to crash, or something, you know, safety concerns, but if you develop it, you're still gonna have people, same issues there, so I was thinking that they were freezing any development as a protection for safety.
No.
No, okay.
Can I just ask, while you're, while you're still at the microphone, and I know that Cindy did bring you the, the staff report, and I'm sorry if you can't hear me, but in the staff report that you have in your hand, on page two and page three, it has a list of different things that the, the developer would be able to do with the property, the uses that we would then be approving for them, whenever they come back later and tell us what their actual plan is for how they're physically gonna lay out the property, any of these uses would be allowed that are in, that are listed here.
Right.
Some of the, some of the things that I was just wanting to hear about your feedback on are the automotive repair uses. So, you know, you're, you're talking about, it says heavy repair equipment, sales and rentals for farm equipment, sales and rentals for trucks and mobile homes, recreational vehicles. Do any of those things give you pause?
Well, we didn't, we haven't evaluated this because there's been no specific proposal. There's been nothing to look at, so.
And you won't be able to. At this point, in the, at this point, and I'll lean on, on the chairman here to correct me if I'm, if I'm mistaken, but at this point, they don't have a plan. These are just the, the things that they would be allowed to do.
My understa-
And so at this point, we have the authority to change or modify what they are, what they're allowed to do. And so I'm asking, if you had the ability to change any of these things that are listed, is there anything that you'd be willing, you'd want us to take out?
Well, we're saying, don't let them do anything, leave it at R1.
That's not palatable to me, Mr. Alexander.
What's that?
That, that's not something that I can support. I'm just gonna speak candidly with you and.
I mean, you know, it's residential, it's rural, okay? And it's, that's how it was originally designed to be, and that's how it's grown up.
I understand. Our job is to balance a number of factors.
I understand you have a balance issue here, so.
Yeah. And one of them is to leave this property vacant for eternity, because we don't want anything but residential, but we can't have residential, and that is simply not palatable to me.
Well, see, there's, there's the rub.
But we can't, we can't do anything about that today, unfortunately. We can't re-litigate that.
I know, but the issue is, the point I was trying to make is, it seems unfair. We can't do anything as, from a residential standpoint, but you're allowing, you would be allowing something else to be done.
I, I understand.
That seems to be in conflict with the overall idea of the AE1 overlay to begin with.
Well, the AE1 overlay, as we're told in our staff report, restricts new residential development, which is not what is being proposed here. And so what we're, what we're charged with is making a decision, and at this point, unless commissioners will differ in that, I kinda like to turn our discussion inwardly here, and let's begin to make a decision in this process, because for me, this is a pretty straightforward application. And I think one of the things, and I share your frustration about it in the sense that if I lived there, it would be frustrating to me, but as a planning commissioner in Oklahoma City, to, to look at this and have development that is gonna make use of the land, create property taxes, potentially create sales taxes, things of that nature, it's that and leaving it vacant, that's an easy choice for me, as a planning commissioner who casts a vote to recommend approval of this, right, to city council, is, that is the lesser of the two evils. It is development as opposed to nothing. I can't support nothing. That's just me. I'm, I'm one vote, but I can't support nothing.
The nothing is, is, that, that you're thinking about is also, you gotta think about the importance to keeping Tinker.
I'm, I'm thinking very clearly about the importance of keeping Tinker.
Yeah. You know, you don't wanna upset that at all.
And, which is precisely why there's an AE1 overlay right there, right? Which doesn't allow-
That's my suspicion, yes.
I agree with you.
That's why it was probably put in, was to protect.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for you. About one of these uses. So, if at first it was an I-2 proposal, this is narrower than I-2. It says I-2 is moderate industrial. One of the uses is moderate industrial. To me, if one of them is moderate industrial, plus a bunch of other things, it's broader than moderate industrial. So what is this 8350.0 moderate industrial?
Yep.
Yeah, good point, Mr.
JJ, you wanna, do you happen to have your use unit encyclopedic handy? Mr. Alexander, if you could, excuse me.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. There's three just general industrial use units in the code.
Light?
Light, moderate, and heavy. And they're, they're exactly what they are. Light is everything indoors, nothing heavy, no heavy manufacturing. Moderate allows some outdoor storage and outdoor use, a little heavier manufacturing. And then I-3 is more of the hazardous industrial situation.
Okay. Do you understand what I'm saying, though, is?
Yeah.
If moderate industrial includes everything that I-2 has, if 8350.0 includes everything in I-2, but then there's another 50 listed, it seems broader than moderate industrial.
Right.
What am I missing?
Well, just that I-2 by category in our code just lists out this litany of uses. One of the things that it mentions in the staff report, for example, is gas stations. Well, we know why gas stations is deleted. There, there's never gonna be a gas station.
And to be clear, then, so that is not included in 8350.7, which is-
No.
-moderate industrial.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. But it would be allowed under I-2 as a base zoning unit, or, I'm sorry, as a base zoning district, that use would be allowed, and it's been deleted here. Really, the reason, I mean, we've had this conversation before, really the reason that I-2 has ever saw it is pretty straightforward. It's to allow for outdoor storage. That, that's primarily why people need it over I-1. There are some uses, as JJ said, that are, that are not allowed in I, I-1 by base zone, but are allowed in I-2, but people, when they're asking for I-2, are primarily trying to get outdoor storage, which, I mean, we've got 100-foot buffer to the north, we've got 25-foot buffer to the east, we've got landscaping requirements. I don't know what issue that would create. Commissioner Privet knows the area better than I do. I don't know what issue that would create with that kind of a buffer.
Yeah.
Mark, I mean, is there, can we strike industrial moderate and just leave everything else? Or do you have to have that?
We wouldn't, that's a use unit that we need to really allow for some of the-
Yeah.
-industrial uses to occur on the site.
Right.
And if, Cindy, if you could flip back to the aerial, I mean, we've got the 25-foot buffer on, on our east side, but when you look at it, you can really see the vast majority of the homes are all the way off of, apologies, I can't read that D, and there's a significant portion of vegetation that exists on their properties where there is no residential home placed there. So we felt that the protections were sufficient.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in agreement. I don't, I mean.
Yeah, like I said, the one automotive auction was the one that gave me pause, and then I just noticed that since Rusty said it, but it makes sense now.
Any other comments on this from commissioners, or other thoughts?
Just, just my thought that I, I think, and, and I just wanna encourage this, I understand that, that choices have been made about the people who are adjacent to this property, but I just wanna reiterate to neighbors how important it is to engage in the process rather than decide to just not engage because it's not playing by the rules that you want. Because I, while I'm going to end up voting for this because it is appropriate by all the other standards that we have as a commission, I just think it's better for neighbors to still engage. And so I just, I, I hope that between now and the time that this goes to the city council, that you and your neighbors will strongly consider meeting with Mark and having a discussion about the uses that are in here, so that if there can, if there are changes that can be made between now and the time it goes to city council, that can be done. So I, I really think you should consider that.
The applicant, through their consultant, had called.
Mr. Alexander, I gotta have you in front of a microphone, my friend.
Had called. In fact, I had been required of the city, and they gave me the number of the, the consulting firm to call, which I did, and I talked to Jessica, I think it was her name, and she said that the, they would be getting a listing of who was notified, who the residents are in the area, and that we, they would probably want to have a, a meet and greet kind of meeting and explain what they wanna do. Never heard from her again. So, you know, the idea of engaging, we've been open to hearing, but we've not heard-
Well, there were, there were lots of folks here in December. I mean, it's not as though people aren't aware of this.
My, my concern and hope is, 'cause I, maybe I misunderstood the introduction from Mark, that there was outreach to the neighbors, that the neighbors said unless there is a specific thing, a specific development that this, this application is, is to allow, then we don't need to engage in the process because we just want it to be residential. Am I misunderstanding that?
I'm not aware of any neighbor being reached out to.
Right. So, if, if I may, just, just quickly, we are still open to a neighborhood meeting. Our client has also reached out and sent emails and phone calls to Mr. Alexander. So we are more than willing to engage and have conversations, but with the, the delay of just moving into a PUD process, we would ask for a recommendation today so we can do this between now and city council. We are continued and willing to meet with the neighbors.
Understood. Good for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Privet, are you ready?
Yeah, I spoke with Mark's client, too, and that's what I suggested, reach out and, you know, do the best you can, and if they don't wanna meet, they don't wanna meet, but yeah, I'm, I'm ready for, to recommend and move to city council.
Okay, we do wanna add a TE to delete use unit 8300.16.
Yep.
And my memory in the application as I flip pages is that there was no other TEs. Is that right?
Right.
Yeah, so this would just be TE1.
Okay. With that, I'll recommend approval of PUD 1889, deleting use unit 8300.16.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on PUD 1889, adding TE1, which deletes use unit 8300.16, automotive auction. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Next item is item 10.
This is KC 7421, final plat of Shoreline Edition, and this is located north of East Memorial Road and west of North Midwest Boulevard.
Okay. Applicant present?
Doug Clausen, MKEC Engineering, 205 Northwest 63rd, for the applicant.
Okay.
We're in agreement with the TEs, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. This final plat is in accordance with the preliminary plat that was approved back in, I believe it was December.
Okay. There are three TEs that you're in agreement with. Commissioner Pennington, this is your words, sir. Any questions for the applicant on this one?
No questions, and I'm ready to make the motion.
Let me make sure there's nobody here. Would anybody like to be heard on C-7421, final plat? Okay. Seeing nobody, if there's no discussion from commissioners, we got five here, so let's make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of C-7421, including all three TEs.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the final plat for C-7421. It's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. Mr. Hinkle was away, he's absent. And that final plat is approved. Good luck with your project. Next item on the agenda is item number 11. Mr. Butler?
This is KC 7426, preliminary plat of Boulding Farms, located north of West Hefner Road and east of North Cemetery Road.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is a preliminary plat just east of Cemetery Road on the north side of Hefner. It's in conformance with a recently approved PUD. There are one-acre lots on the west and 30,000-square-foot lots on the east. We would ask that, we agree with the TEs, we would, except for two, we would ask that number two be stricken. We are extending water to this and through the site. We do not need a variance on number three, and we agree to the rest of the TEs. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So we can approve TE3 as is because you're gonna provide the access?
Say it again.
We can, we can leave TE3 as it is because you're gonna provide the access, essentially.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Just wanna make sure it's-
I just don't need the variance, correct.
Yep. Commissioner Claire, this is your word, sir. Do you have questions or comments for the applicant?
No, I don't. I do wanna note that did receive a letter or an email from Jerry Cooper, just acknowledging his concerns about these will be well water, which you said you're extending-
Public waters being extended.
Public water, but you'll still have private septic. So he, he was just concerned about water quality and, and infrastructure issues, so.
Got it. Is there anybody here that wants to be heard on item 11 today? C-7426. It's preliminary plat. Okay. If there's no further discussion for commissioners, Commissioner Claire, you know the applicant's request on the TEs, so I'll let you make a motion if you'd like to make one.
Yeah. I'll move approval of item C-7426, deleting TE2, subject to the rest of the TEs.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat for C-7426, subject to technical evaluations, but deleting TE2. It's been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that preliminary plat is approved. Next item is item 12.
This is KC 7428, preliminary plat of Magnolia Harbor, located south of Northwest 23rd Street and west of Overholser Drive.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant who's also here, Mr. Richard McCowen. This is a site that we just came through not too long ago with the PUD. It was ultimately approved at city council, so now we're coming back through with the preliminary plat. It is consistent with the PUD, it is consistent with the subdivision regulations, and we agree to all the TEs except TE number three, where it requires individual fire suppression systems. We would ask that that TE be deleted. There will be public water through this, and as we have discussed at nauseam in these meetings, there is no requirement by ordinance to do that, and so I'm not frankly sure why it keeps coming up within technical evaluations, but we do not intend to have fire suppression.
Understood. Commissioner Claire, we're back to you, sir. Questions on this application?
No questions. I think this is, you know, a huge opportunity to develop on, on, just off of Lake Overholser with the, with Route 66 Park, so I think this could, you know, be a very, very good development for this area.
This area is developing quickly, which I think is a great thing. So I agree with you. I don't have anybody sign up to speak on this. Would anybody like to be heard on C-7428? Okay. If there's no further discussion for commissioners, I think we'll take a motion. Commissioner Claire, you've heard the applicant's comments on the technical evaluations.
Yeah, I'll move approval of item C-7428, subject to the technical evaluations, deleting TE3.
Okay. I have a motion to approve C-7428, subject to the technical evaluations, deleting TE3. It's been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is approved.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item 13.
This is KC 7429, final plat of Green Hill, located south of Northwest 164th Street and west of North Sarah Road.
Applicant present? Mr. Zizao, I think we're back to you.
Mark Zizao, Johnson and Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. This is a final plat for rezoning that was approved last year, and also previously approved preliminary plat. We agree with all the TEs except for TE number two, and if we could just kinda take a copy and paste of what David had just mentioned about fire suppression and insert it right here, we would like to do so.
No surprise there, Mr. Zizao. Commissioner Claire, you're popular. Any comments on this one?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody wanna be heard on C-7429? Okay. Seeing nobody, if you're ready to make your motion, Commissioner Claire, I'll take it.
Move approval of item C-7429, subject to technical evaluations, deleting technical evaluation number two.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the final plat of Green Hill, C-7429, subject to the technical Okay, I have a motion to approve the final plat of Green Hill, C 7429, subject to the technical evaluations, but deleting TE2, been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that plat is approved. Next item on the agenda is item 14.
Item 14 is case PC 10807, application to rezone 1925 Amenas Way from PUD 153 to R1.
Good afternoon, Mark Zizao, Johnson and Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. Uh, this is a fairly straightforward application. Uh, we are proposing, uh, to construct some single-family homes within the Mar-a-Lago addition. Uh, this is a, was in an existing PUD that had a portion of this as a green belt, but Cindy, if you can go back to the aerial, uh, when the turnpike came through, they constructed on a portion of this PUD, uh, all the borrow pits for the dirt to construct the turnpike. And so that significantly changed how this PUD was built out. Originally, it was multifamily, commercial uses, and a mix of other residential densities. So now, in coming back, we're seeking to allow more R1 on the western boundary. Uh, there is one TE that we would like to add, which will come in on the plat, uh, which is the, the next case, uh, but we will be adding a pedestrian connection, uh, so that this neighborhood would be able to access the school property, so students can walk to school, uh, in the morning and in the afternoon. So, uh, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. We haven't received any letters or phone calls on this one, um, so.
So that, that TE1, I just want to make sure I get that language clear, would just be, applicants can require a pedestrian connection to this, to the school north and west of the...
Yes, and that TE would probably fall on item 15 if this one was approved, because that would be a plat.
Got it. Okay. Okay, got it. Um, Commissioner Claire?
Yeah, no, no questions. I did, I did have a conversation with Mr. Zizao yesterday regarding that pedestrian connection, uh, so that was the only, that was the only item, so.
Okay. I do not have anybody sign up to speak on this. Is there anybody that wants to be heard on PC 10807? Okay. Seeing nobody, if there's no discussion from commissioners, I'll take a motion on the item. Commissioner Claire?
Remove approval of PC 10807.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10807. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval. Uh, next item is 15. Mr. Butler?
This is KC 7411, final plat of Mar-a-Lago, Section 4, located south of Northwest 23rd Street and east of North Mustang Road, and a variance to Section 5.3.1.1D.15 of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon, Mark Zizao with Johnson and Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. Uh, this is the companion item for the zoning that was just recommended for approval. Uh, we agree with all the TEs. TE2, I guess we would question if we still need, now that we're agreeing to a 20-foot-wide pedestrian easement for the connectivity to the west. So, I don't know if, in lieu of a vehicular connection, the pedestrian connection alleviates the need for the variance. JJ is shaking his head no, so we would still need the variance.
That would have been my suspicion. Um, so, the, the, basically TE5 would be the pedestrian connection? For the school, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the issue we need to dispense of is whether we want to grant the variance to Section 5.3.1D.5, but, uh, Commissioner Claire?
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with, with the variance. Uh, no concerns there. So unless there's other discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Uh, just out of an abundance of caution, is there anybody that wants to be heard on C 7411? No? Okay. If there's no discussion from commissioners, I'll take the motion.
I'll move to recommend approval of item C 74, excuse me, move, uh, move, I take the variance first.
Thank you, sir.
Move to, uh, approve the variance for Section 5.3.1.1D.15 of the subdivision regulations.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the variance. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and the variance is approved. Now, we see a motion on the item.
Move recommend approval of item C 7411, uh, adding TE5, that the applicant shall provide a minimum 20-foot pedestrian connection on the west property line to connect to the school.
You good with that language, Mr. Zizao?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the final plat, subject to the technical evaluations, as amended and read into the record by Commissioner Claire. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is approved. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Next item is item 16.
This is PUD 1882, application to rezone 15027, North MacArthur Boulevard, from R201 and C3 to PUD 1882.
Good afternoon, Mark Zizao, Johnson and Associates, 20 Sheridan Avenue. Uh, this is an application to rezone, uh, this hard corner into commercial and office uses. Uh, within the past couple of years, you've seen multiple final plats, uh, for development just south called the Annecy. Uh, this is going to seek to provide some services and some office, uh, to complement the area. Currently, the hard corner is Zone C3, but we did include it in this PUD, uh, and so we have also included some of the compatibility measures that we, we will typically talk about and see. So we have landscape buffers, uh, along kind of our southwest, uh, sections, uh, with evergreen plantings. We've also restricted, uh, any call box or speaker, uh, from being within 150 feet of that line. And so, uh, otherwise, we feel that the application in the PUD is appropriate for the area, given, and given the development pattern, so with that, uh, I will address the TEs. So, uh, we originally were seeking, uh, additional access points. Within our PUD, we refined those, and so we feel that what we've proposed, uh, is adequate. We do meet the minimum separation distance per the code, so we would ask that you, uh, delete, uh, TEs 1 and 2.
Okay, so we want to delete both the TEs. Um, I appreciate, this is Ward 8K, so, um, I'll give my comments first. The, uh, issues I had, which you and I talked about, were, you know, standard stuff, dumpsters, separation, 150 feet. You've addressed all that. The only thing I'd like for you to strike is automotive parking garages, 8300.12 as a use unit. Any objection to that?
No, we can agree to that.
Okay, strike 8300.12. The rest of my concerns, you've really addressed, uh, in, in previous discuss, since previous discussions, so, uh, I feel great about the application. I think it's great for the corner. Hopefully, we'll see some development over there. Sales tax are good, so, uh, I think you've done a good job of making it compatible. So, I have no other discussions. I don't have anybody sign up to speak, and I haven't heard from anybody in the ward. Other commissioners have comments on this?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Um, so the TEs are limit access points to two. That's what you have shown on, on North MacArthur. That's what you have on the site plan, as well as TE1 is one, with the only, the only thing I see different is that you're, you know, not aligned with that, that drive across the street, so are you seeking, thinking you might need additional entrances on both?
Sure, so what's not shown on here is the development that will occur on the hard corner.
Yeah.
Uh, and so, we're seeking to allow for a drive on, off of each street to allow for that to develop. And so, what that may trigger, once that site plan gets worked out, is our drive on 150th may need to be moved further to the west. There's potential for shared or drives getting shifted on MacArthur, so there's just a little bit of unknown with that hard corner, which is why we're seeking some flexibility there. One of the other things, uh, this will require a specific plan, so you will see, uh, this come back before you.
Okay, so I want to follow up on that. I'm, I'm not an expert on these lining up, but is there a reason why if you're thinking you're probably not going to end up with it where you're showing, you're maybe going to move it, why would you not have it down here where it wouldn't just, uh, I guess it's west of there, to that other little parking area, because if you ended up staying with what we approved, it would be more appropriate not being barely offset?
Sure, so that was something that would get worked out through building permit stage and through specific plan. I think the intent here was just throwing together a conceptual site plan, and there were just a lot of unknowns with how that corner is going to exactly develop.
I get that, but if you're just going to throw something out there for a concept, I would throw it out there more appropriately to the west, as opposed to inappropriately, barely misaligned with, uh, across the street.
Commissioner La Forge, can I make a suggestion on that to you and Commissioner Claire? Because your point's a good one. I like your point. Um, we could re, reserve the right to review drive location at specific plan stage, uh, which would give us the chance to, to actually discuss that at that point. Um, I'm in general agreement with the applicant that, you know, the number of drives that he's asking, given the size of development, is reasonable, but, but locating those drives is everything, so if we just reserve the right at specific plan to review those, then I think we've covered ourselves. If that works. You, you don't have any objection to that, Mr. Zizao?
No, we can agree to that.
Okay. Um, any other concerns? That's a good one. Thank you. Okay, well then, uh, just, I, I can't make the motion, or I'd make a motion to recommend approval, but, uh, it's just, as a refresher, we'd be striking TE1 and 2, adding TE3, which would delete use unit 8300.12, and then adding TE4, which would...
Reserve the right to review the driveway location.
Exactly, provide the planning commission the specific right to review driveway locations at the specific plan stage. Yeah, so if somebody could make that motion, I would be eternally grateful.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of PUD 1882, um, which should include the elimination of TE1, the elimination of TE2, the creation of TE3, which would eliminate use unit 8300.12, and add TE4 to reserve the right to review driveway locations at the specific plan stage.
I'll take it. I have a motion, uh, and a second from Commissioner Hinkle, to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1882, with the TEs amended and outlined by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is item 17.
This is PUD 1888, application... Here we go. PUD 1888, application to rezone 13300 Southeast... PUD 1888.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the developer who's also here, as well as Mark Grubbs, the Civil Project. Uh, this is a PUD to permit a rural-style development at Southeast 74th Street, east of Hiawassee. I do think this represents a first for me in Ward 4 to come to you with a residential development that is recommended for approval by staff, uh, and has met the comprehensive plan in both scale and density. So what we have tried to do is to cluster the five-acre lots, as you see, within Track 2, and then within Track 1, it is an RA base. However, in terms of density, there is a provision in the PUD that limits it to, as shown on the master development plan map, and so there will be a minimum of one-acre lot sizes along that western boundary, and that density range, as staff notes within their comment section, is consistent with the RM density ranges and lot sizes. So, we have a mix of lot sizes, which we believe to be consistent, uh, with the area. Cindy, if you could show the zoning map, please. It is worth noting that there is, uh, straight RA to the north, and as you, you, you hear often, the straight RA, although it is a minimum of one acre, it does allow lot sizes down to 30,000 square feet. We have taken that provision out and instead refer back to, um, the exhibit as to our lot sizes. So it will be minimum of one-acre lot sizes along that west, and then you have the five-acre lot sizes within Track 2, and you have a, uh, an AA base within Track 2. So, we believe it to be consistent and compatible. Uh, that, that density is matched, again, to the north of us, and it's so consistent and compatible that there are no technical evaluate, evaluations contained within the staff report. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
The southeast corner, David, is that going to be undeveloped of Track 2?
So we don't know. Um, we, we left it not shown. It could be a single user takes it down. It could be a couple users take it down, but of course...
Have to have access to it, though.
They'd have to have access, but the, in the PUD, it is AA, so the, the smallest lot you could get out of it would be a five-acre tract.
Yeah, okay.
And that's something that you're going to have to address later.
Or, yeah, plating, or, you know, yes, but we did, we put it in the PUD just so that there was, you know, some guarantees that you'd see no more than one home per five acres. Um, yeah, behalf of answering any questions.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Privet, is your ward. I do have some folks signed up to speak, so let's hear what they have to say. Um, first person I have signed up is Kristi Gifford. Ms. Gifford, as a friendly reminder, start out by giving us your name and address for the record, okay?
My name is Kristi Gifford, and I reside at 7508 Dripping Springs Lane, which is located to, directly to the east, um, of this particular one in question. And so, I've lived there since 1994, and since I've lived there, the planning commission has, uh, approved three separate additions that have been built east of Hiawassee, located off of Southeast 74th. One of those includes a second phase that was built. So additionally, there have been other homes that have been approved, 25-acre lots, five-acre lots, one-acre lots along Southeast 74th. So we are currently, according to the Tax Assessors Office, we are at 202, um, I'm sorry, 324 homes that have currently been built east of Hiawassee Road on 74th. Why is that important? Well, um, my point would be, if you were to, uh, have a subdivision brought to you with the potential of the additional 31 homes that they are proposing, would bring us to 355. We do not have another outlet, other than the intersection of Southeast 74th and Hiawassee Road. So there's one way in and one way out. And Mr. Moore spoke with myself and my neighbor Paula, and he indicated that most people like that due to crime. I, I agree, but I also like the thought of an ambulance being able to get to me or one of my neighbors, should something happen. Well, in 2010, we did have something happen. We had a tornado that came through the area. It took out the Anderson Travel Plaza in the Loves, perhaps you remember that, at Choctaw? That came through our neighborhood. Had that been north approximately a quarter of a mile, that would have prohibited any city services reaching us. We would have been completely blocked off. There were fires in 2011 that were also in the vicinity. Uh, I was on vacation with my in-laws and my son, and I asked my husband to please vacate, because there was no way we could all get out at one four-way stop if that fire grew as fast as it was. In 2020, my neighbor reminded me, we had an automobile accident. It took over two hours for them to clear that intersection. Neighbors were getting out of their cars, parking along the way, walking home. That was a simple car accident. If there's a natural disaster, it's much more, because we have very, it's very wooded, and if those trees come down and block the two lane, we have, we have a real problem. So, my question would be, using the metric of 2.58 people, according to the Oklahoma City Status, uh, Census, that puts us at about 836 people are back there. Is there a metric that is used on the number of lives that are put at risk by continuing to, to prove these? What, what is that number? Because I would propose that we're 17 miles from our, our police station. We're the Santa Fe. Everybody knows, don't count on the police. You got to count on your neighbors. You got to, you got to keep your house safe. You got to protect yourself. They're just too far away. The city is huge. They have a huge area, area, but Southeast Santa Fe, that's where we're, we're counting on. And we are doing our part as citizens of Oklahoma City. Within Oklahoma County, we're the fourth highest tax rate on mileage. Within the city of Oklahoma City, within the county, also the fourth. So we're doing our part, but what is the city doing to provide us safety and services? That's what I would like to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gifford. We appreciate it. Um, I also have signed up Kathy Hubbard. Did I get that right? Welcome, Ms. Hubbard. Please give us your name and address for the record when you get here, okay?
My name is Kathy Hubbard, and my address is 13501 Southeast 79th Street, Oklahoma City. My home is approximately seven acres, which joins the subject property on its east boundary. Specifically, it is my property that joins the approximate 20-acre plot of land, which lies within the southern portion of Track 2. So, if you look at that plot there, my house is at the end of the cul-de-sac on the north. That street, that cul-de-sac there is a privately maintained road. I've lived there since 1995 and have paid into an HOA to maintain that street, and my desire is that that remain a private street and that I not be forced into a situation where my land is, um, acquired through eminent domain in order to get to a 20-plus acre plot that is currently being designed, so that it is knowingly landlocked. And that is one of my reasons for being here today, is to be on record that, that land, that 20-acre southeast corner of that, and I say 20 acres, it's approximately 20 acres, but that it is being designed with everyone knowing that it will be landlocked. It's my understanding that the developer has spoken to a neighbor or two and has mentioned that he may already have a buyer, so where does that leave me? What I'm asking you then is to respectfully require the owner and developer at this time to be responsible for allowing access to that 20-acre plus lot, rather than me being forced to be responsible for his developing and knowingly creating a landlot.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, last person I have signed up to speak is Frank Walsh. Mr. Walsh?
Frank Walsh, 7800 South Hiawassee. Uh, can you put the, uh, plot back up there? So, I'm here representing myself, 7800, my son's 7900, uh, and Dan... So I'm here representing myself, 7800, my son's 7900, and Dan Andrews has five, the entire west boundary. And Dan has five, I have 20, my son has 30. And some comment was made that these one-acre lots are in, in sequence with the development thus far. Well, you've got a 30, 20, and five-acre lot, and these one-acre lots are backed right up to our property. And we do ranching there. And if we have one-acre lots, it's approximately 15 houses backing up to us. That's the congestion part of it. We do not know what kind of green belt proposals going into this. Hopefully, 100 feet off of our property line, at least 50. We'd like to see a minimum acreage of two and a half acres, which is what has been historically out there in that area. Oh, let's see, there's another point on the, that would be the southern, I don't know whether you've got, show that other depiction there. Okay, if you look at Casbaum, that's a private road that accesses numerous small houses down there on two and a half and five-acre lots. Right now, that road is inundated in any kind of heavy downpour. Not sure what kind of engineering has gone on to determine the increase in drainage. I've got a picture of it that I took this morning. It's almost impossible, and unless it's properly drained, those people will be cut off. The services, I believe one of the other speakers brought up, our big trash removal, this past pickup was out there for two weeks. So the city is having a hardened-up problem serving us as it is. And if you throw another 50 houses in there, we're really going to have an issue. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate it very much, Mr. Wright, or Mr. Walsh, excuse me. Thank you for coming down. Commissioner Privet, this is your ward. Before I ask for comments, let me have staff address just a couple of things. And I'm actually not sure on a couple of these who the right person from staff's going to be, so I'll let them decide who can help me. The first thing I'd like to address is Ms. Hubbard's concern about access to the 20 acres. 78th Street is a private street, according to her. I assume that's accurate? I take her at her word that that's accurate?
No.
79th? Sorry, 79th? Do you know, Ms. Box?
No, but what I can say is we have absolutely no intention or right to touch that street. Any access to tract two, that, that large tract, would have to come through our development.
I understand. I was, staff in agreement with that. So Mr. Shambles, J.J. Shambles, Development Services agreeing with it. I was trying to get comment from city staff for the comfort of the neighbors as opposed to the attorney for the applicant. But the, that 20 acres, you're telling us you don't have any intention to connect, and if it's a private street, J.J., you're in agreement that they don't have the right to connect? Could you just make them feel...
Correct.
Okay. So, Ms. Hubbard, there you go. I hope that assuages...
If that's guaranteed, is it not...
They don't, they don't have to, the question for Ms. Hubbard is whether or not they have to plat it that way. They're not here for a plat right now. They're here for zoning. So right now, that's not a particular concern. That is a part of that phase of the process, but that's not the phase of the process that's before us. Unlike a specific plan, if you were here and you heard us talk about that not being noticed, you will be noticed at the point where a plat is required. That's a, that's a required notice deal, so you'll get another notification about that hearing, okay? Thank you, Ms. Hubbard. I appreciate you being here. Ms. Gifford's concern about access, I didn't totally follow that, and I was frantically trying to get Google Earth up where I could look and see what you're talking about. It's that there's no highway access. Is that, would you, would you mind coming, I'm sorry, would you mind just coming back up? I want to make sure that I can get this so we can be thoughtful about that.
Yeah, I brought this up. I was involved in the southeast sector plan many years ago with Pete White, and I had brought it to his attention. And the same scenario is also located east of Hiawassee on 89th. It's two areas that deadend, so there is no outlet. So any home that resides east of Hiawassee on Southeast 74th or Southeast 89th can go nowhere but back east or back west to Southeast 74th and Hiawassee, creating a bottleneck. So, sorry, I got very dry earlier. What I was going to make a point is that there were, with the 355 homes, that if you approve the 31 additional as plotted...
East of there.
East of there.
I'm with you.
We have to all go back through that intersection.
Yeah, I'm with you now. I was, I couldn't visualize it because I'm not terribly familiar with the area, just candidly, but now I'm looking at an aerial and I understand it. So thank you very much for turning that up.
Yes.
We'll come back to that in discussion, but that's a good point. And then, don't want to leave out Mr. Walsh. So a couple things on that, just that I'll, I'll share. The drainage issue is something that is, is, will be discussed at a later phase as well. There are requirements for those. They're outlined in the subdivision regulations. It's not something that's typically talked about at the zoning phase. It's very talked about from the neighbor's perspective, but it's not discussed from the planning commission's perspective. And actually, until we get to a final plat, at that time, the city reviews it. I will tell you, nobody throw anything at me, typically speaking, because of those requirements and oversight, development actually improves drainage rather than the other way around. Farmland that's tilled and is left vacant drains whichever way it's tilled. It, it's not required to go back toward any kind of city street. So it's hard to say for sure, but the city will review it again, and as a part of that review process, you'll be noticed, so you'll have a chance to talk about that at the appropriate time when the city's had a chance to address it. So that's how that process works. In terms of the buffer of 100 feet, we can talk about that. That's probably a step way too far for me. I'm not sure what we're buffering from a compatibility standpoint, just candidly, but we can talk about that. So, and then the lot size issue is a part of that same thing, so we can talk about that as well. Commissioner Privet, do you have comments or thoughts on this, having heard complaints and issues?
I think you covered them pretty good. Yeah, my concern, the same with tract two, but if that develops, we'll see it again, so, yeah.
What is more likely to happen is that one of the people that have a five-acre tract up top will take down either a portion or all of it. I mean, without access, it's going to be, you know, fairly difficult. That's why we left it like this, but have it under the PUD so that you've got the controls.
Yeah, I just think she's concerned that you're going to, like OTA-style, condemn her property and drive on it, so, yeah. As long as we're not doing that, we're good.
No, we have no right of condemnation.
Much to your frustration, I'm sure.
No, I'm here for the landowners.
Okay. Other commissioners have questions or concerns on this for the applicant or comments they'd like to make? Okay. If there's no discussion on this, Commissioner Privet, if you'd like to make a motion, sir, I think we're ready to take it.
We didn't have any TEs we wanted to add or anything, did we?
We do not have TEs. There's no TEs recommended. I will, I will say, although it's not determinative for the, my review of the application or my decision on the application, but I think, I want to make sure I get the, get the concern right. Ms. Gifford's concern about access is probably my biggest concern for the area in terms of, you know, longer-term development. I, I'm not, I'm...
Yeah, what's the answer to that?
Certain Councilman Stone is aware of that, but that's something that needs to be discussed, I think, pretty heavily because this area of where it is along 240 and 40, that interchange, I mean, I think more development's going to be coming. I think we want to, I think we want to be thinking about that as a city because that is, I understand her concern about that for sure. I really do.
Can you state that City Councilman Todd Stone is aware of this?
I, I said, I hope he's aware of it, yeah.
Well, I did, actually, when he took office. I sent an email to his office and made him aware of this 80 acres and my concerns about it being further developed and that the safety of everybody involved, and I got no response. We have, since we received notice of this, tried to set up an appointment to meet with him and also Brian Mon, the county commissioner, and we've received no response. So we feel very abandoned by the city, though, as I noted, we're one of the highest-paying millages. So it's a very frustrating point, and I feel, I was 20-something when I bought my home. I never thought about having to get out of an outlet and being stopped. And there was talk of a $3 million bridge being built, is what they wanted the developer to put in initially. No, unfortunately, we weren't tied to Reinhardt. That didn't happen. So we are stuck, and we've had these additional three neighborhoods built that this commission has done, and there may be more because I've got over 30 acres that I see is not yet plotted as far as I know. What, what do we do? Where do we go when our city councilman won't, won't return an email or a phone call or set up a meeting, when our county commissioner won't meet with us? What, what as a citizen am I supposed to do? I have no option but to come to you and make you aware that your actions are continuing to further the damage to, to all of us.
Yeah. Well, here's the, I appreciate those comments. I'm not going to speak for any councilperson, you know, that's not what I'm here to do. What I will say is that this is going to come before them with a recommendation, one way or the other, depending on what happens here. And that recommendation will go to them for final approval. So it is going to be something that Councilman Stone and the other councilpeople are going to have to be aware of. And just as you did today, I would encourage you, as you heard Commissioner Pennington, you know, sort of articulate to another group of folks, engage in that process. It's six weeks before it gets to council. There's plenty of time there for you all to have those discussions, and I would certainly encourage you to do that. And I'd be, I'd be very surprised if you don't get some sort of a response in advance of that meeting, but...
A call and an email so far has gone unresponded, you know?
And with the closure of Douglas, too, it, it may be a little more of importance.
It's going to be an incredible importance. Thank you for making that because actually with the construction that's also heading east on I-40, Anderson Road is going to be closed at one point. And we're very, very much kind of an island out there. And so we're very limited. We're, we're fortunate to have the fire department located at Southeast 74th and Anderson, but the firemen have said it's very clear they're there to keep the other properties from burning down. They're not there to save us. So we know this. People know this. We live out there rural, but to be able to get services like emergency care, because I, I work from home and I hear sirens multiple times, an ambulance or fire department going by to care for somebody who's got a medical need back there. And it, so it's a huge, and my son had seizures, so I routinely had to have emergency care reach my home. And so it frightens me greatly to continue to put other people who, like myself, hadn't considered it in the way...
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gifford. We appreciate it. I think we should make our motion, move the item. As I said, I think six weeks between now and council, I'd really be trying to engage. Be shocked if you don't get engagement, just given what I've heard in the past. But, but I want to encourage you to do that, and hopefully you all can have some good discussions because it is, it is a legitimate concern, I think, from your, from your chair. I would, I would share it, so.
Yep.
Commissioner Privet, if you want to, we'll take a motion at this time.
Yep.
Either way, you want to make it.
I'll move to recommend approval of S.P.U.D.
P.U.D.
P.U.D. 1888 to City Council.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on P.U.D. 1888. There are no TEs. It's been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes. And that item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item 18. This is S.P.U.D. 1389, application rezone 2215 North Klassen Boulevard from R2, Gatewood Urban Conservation District and Klassen Boulevard Overlay District to S.P.U.D. 1389.
Hi, folks. Alex Klegel-Haper, 3348 Northwest 172nd Terrace, on behalf of Vicky Michie Tranwin, the applicant. So what we have here is a, really an nail salon building that is currently zoned R2 under the city code, just looking for an S.P.U.D. We crafted it with Commissioner Powers, with Sarah Welch from the city to hopefully restrict further redevelopment that was not in the interest of the area, but allow the current building to be leased out. Right now, if it's R2, it has to either be a nail shop or nothing else. So with that said, I'll take any questions.
Is nail shop allowed in R2?
According to this PUD application, it is, it's going to be, but it's C1 is the underlying base, so...
Yep. So we've taken away quite a few uses from the C1 district. Commissioner Powers and I went line by line to discuss which may or may not be appropriate throughout gas stations, bunch of different animal feedlots, that sort of thing.
Sure. I'm very little, I have very little concern over any of the uses that you have listed because of the size of the site.
Yeah.
It's .06 acres. So any multifamily residential that you might put there or a single pump gas station, it seems like a far cry from...
Probably not highest and best use of that, that land there.
Yeah, probably not. I don't have any comments on this. I did not have anybody signed up to speak on this. Any commissioner comments? And then I'll just make sure that there's nobody signed up. Okay. Anybody want to be heard today on S.P.U.D. 1389? All right. If there's no further discussion, we just need a motion on the item. There are no TEs.
I'll move approval, S.P.U.D. 1389.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on S.P.U.D. 1389. It's been seconded by Commissioner Pennington. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval. Good luck with your project.
Thanks, sir.
Hope you make some use of that thing. Item 19.
This is case S.P.U.D. 1395, application rezone 4020 South Walker Avenue from R1 to S.P.U.D. 1395.
Once again, David Box, 522 Colacord Drive. Cindy, could you go to the aerial? This, this is a bit of a unique, there we go, a unique application in that this, this site is zoned, single-family. These buildings have existed for many, many years, I believe decades, and it was originally built as commercial or industrial type of use. The whole thing is paved outside of the buildings, and it's, it's been operated as everything but a single-family residence. So the intent of the application is to allow the use to legally operate in a manner consistent with its historic operation. You may recall this was on the agenda two weeks ago, and there were a host of TEs, including a laundry list of uses that staff desired that we take out. We continue the application for the revised S.P.U.D. to be reviewed, and what you see now before you is an S.P.U.D. with no technical evaluation. So we did remove all of the uses that staff had suggested, made all of the suggestions in the S.P.U.D. that they had had in that previous staff report. So we believe it to be compatible with what you'd expect along Walker. Walker is four-lane and heavily traveled, and again, compatible with the historic use of these buildings. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Privet?
Yeah, I talked to David. I think we agreed to remove 8300.69.
We can remove 8300.69, yes, sir.
And that was my only concern with it at this point.
That was mine as well. I do not have anybody signed up to speak on this. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on S.P.U.D. 1395? Really shocked there's not at least a couple of folks here for this, honestly, but there's not. So if there's no further discussion from commissioners, I'll take a motion if you'd like to make it, Commissioner Privet.
Okay. I'll move to approve S.P.U.D. 1395, or recommend approval to City Council.
Adding TE1.
Adding TE1, removing use unit, let's say, 8300.69.
That's it. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval. Good luck with your project. Next item is item 20.
Item 20 is case S.P.U.D. 1400, application to rezone 1035 Northwest 112th Street from R1 to S.P.U.D. 1400.
Once again, David Box, 522 Colacord Drive, on behalf of the applicant, who's also here, as well as Mark Grubbs, who is the civil engineer for this project. This is an S.P.U.D. that will operate as a continuation of the S.P.U.D. that exists to the east. To the east is built out with some office slash warehouse buildings. That is the intent here. We really carried over most of the design regulations contained within the S.P.U.D. that exists to our east. There is a TE that seeks to prohibit the westernmost buildings from having west... There is a T.E. that seeks to prohibit the westernmost buildings from having west-facing garages, which we do agree to. As you can see on the site plane, we have a 15-foot building setback. We do agree to comply with all landscaping regulations, which will require a landscape buffer along that western side. So, that, along with our agreement to have no overhead doors facing west, we believe we have satisfied any potential compatibility triggers, and we'd ask for your approval.
This is Commissioner Pennington's ward. Comments on this one?
No comments. I've visited with the developer unless there are concerns from neighbors.
I don't have anybody sign up to speak. I had two suggestions for Mr. Box on this. One is that the west face of the west buildings have a brick veneer, which I thought you were...
Yeah, we agree.
You were agreed to.
So, on the westernmost buildings...
Yep. And my thought there, Commissioner Pennington, is that's just what backs up to the residences, so I'm trying to keep there from being a damaged metal building that somebody's got to stare at all day. So, if they'll put that 70% requirement, I'm not altering, but I think that that should face those residences. So, that was my thought there. That's the only comment I had.
We agree. We can add that as T.E. 2.
Is there anybody that wants to be heard today on S.P.U.D. 1400? 1400, crazy. There's no discussion or comments from commissioners, I think we're ready for your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of S.P.U.D. 1400 with the addition of T.E. 2, and I'm going to do my best on the phrasing here, that the facade of the western part of the buildings be a, be brick.
Yeah, the west facade of the westernmost, westernmost buildings shall be brick.
Perfect.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on S.P.U.D. 1400, adding T.E.s, requiring T.E. 1 and adding T.E. 2, that the west face of the west building shall be brick. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes when available. 1, 2, 3, all votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item 21.
This is S.P.U.D. 1217, application to rezone 4020 and 4021 North McKinley from R1.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kelly Work. I am here representing the applicants in support of this S.P.U.D. 1217. This, these two tracks are on either side of McKinley Avenue, they're north of northwest 39th Street, and on the, just south of northwest 40th Street. This is essentially an infill, single-family residential project. These will be, there is a, there is an existing residence on track 2 that was relatively new. I believe it was built in 2019. The track 1 is currently vacant. The S.P.U.D. contemplates that there will be three detached, single-family residences constructed on track 1. We appreciate your patience with this particular application. I know it has been being continued from multiple pockets. And what that really related to, there was an issue that arose with respect to the title of the vacated portion of the right-of-way, where this project is, is being proposed, and that issue had to be resolved in district court. It has now been resolved, and, and, and so we're here before you're ready to move forward. We have resolved a couple of issues that had been raised by staff at a previous setting. There are no T.E.s, and we have, and we've been involved with the, the neighbors over the last several months. We're not aware of any protest. We would certainly be happy to answer any questions that you all may have, and, and we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Work. 23 continuances is quite a run. Yeah, that's, I've never seen that before, but I understand litigation can be time-consuming, so we get it. I do have one person who signed up to speak before we make general comments in Commissioner Powers' absence, but, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name, but Rahi Oldham, are you here?
Yes.
Welcome, sir. Start out by giving us your name and address, okay?
It's happened before. It's Ray Oldham, and I live, or I own the property at 4117 North McKinley.
Did you participate in the Zoom meeting in '20 when we did that?
In the...
We had a Zoom meeting, because we were doing, obviously during COVID in '20, when this case first started, we were doing them remotely, and so we were doing them via Zoom. Did you participate in that?
No, this is my first participation.
Okay, just curious.
And I do have a handout.
So, if you'll start circulating it down there, we'll take a look at it. If you have an extra one for Mr. Work, I bet he'd love to see it, too. You can just hand them to Commissioner Pennington, he can circulate them for you, just to make it easy. Thank you very much. If you wouldn't mind handing one of those to Mr. Work, just so he knows what you're showing us, too.
Well, my main concern is for drainage, where the storm sewer is. On this map, page number one, the green and white dotted line is the storm sewer.
Okay.
And it indicates that it goes through the western portion of this property. And these maps, I've found, these schematics are generalities, where these lines are marked are not necessarily where the lines are actually located. I own the property that runs east to west, that's pretty much right in the middle of this picture. It's actually a vacated trolley line, and it's, if you see the address 1521, the number 1521, that yellow line running east to west, my property is between that yellow line and the next yellow line immediately above it. And on this schematic, it shows these sewer lines as being, these are sanitary sewer lines, the yellow ones, shows them as being pretty much on the property line. However, the southern sewer line is actually about 15 feet further north than it indicates, and the northern line is about 12 feet south of where it indicates. And I mention that as, to bring to the attention that I'm not, where the, where it shows the existing storm sewer running through this project area, is it really in that location? And on page 2, I've marked A, B, and C. B and C are manhole covers for storm sewers. And if the storm drain runs directly from B to C, it pretty much bisects the project area. The manhole, or the A marking is, appears to be a manhole cover that is actually in the street but covered up. And the reason I'm concerned that these sewer lines might be in this location is that on page 3, at one time, this property was a park. And if this property was a city park, when the sewer lines were laid, then the storm lines would have gone in the most direct path from B to C. And again, that would pretty much eliminate, I think, any development on track 1, or certainly reduce the scope of it. The manhole cover A, I've got pictures, the final two pictures, 4 and 5.
Mr. Oldham, if I may, and I apologize for interrupting you, but I'd like to get somebody from city staff up here just to address what you're trying to explain to us.
Okay.
Because they're the ones who produce these. So, I think it would just be helpful to hear from them where this goes, and I have a feeling that this is probably a part of what was at issue in the litigation, where some of these easements that were being addressed. So, Barry Lodge, are you, are you familiar with this? Can you comment on this at all?
I have not looked at any of this prior to right now. I just picked up the copies that were given to Mr. Work, so I could look at those. So, we haven't seen anything come through with any questions on this at this point.
Are you, are you, this is like the oddest question I think I've ever asked, that's rhetorical in nature. Are you familiar with these lines? Like, can you, is there anybody that's going to be able to say with any kind of specificity that this is exactly where these lines are?
At, at this point, there's not.
That's what I figured.
That's going to be something that would be determined with a field survey. These are going to be just generalities on, on where the GIS would locate them.
Mr. Oldham, is your concern that they're not going to be able to develop it, or is your concern that it's going to impact your use of the lines further downstream? What's, what's the nature of the concern?
My nature of the concern is yes, mainly, actually, the sewer line goes, it continues north of 40th, and it goes under an existing residence, which, while that was allowed to happen, I have no idea. I would hate to see the city allow this project to go through, and then in a few years, when this line needs to be replaced or repaired, have to buy those properties to gain access to the sewer line.
Well, that part of it, I think we probably can comment on, which is that when these guys go to pull a building permit, all those utilities and things are located in easements, they're not going to be able to put a structure on top of an easement that's got a city waterline in it.
Yes.
Right.
So, that's at a future point?
Correct. Yeah, in terms of when they go to build structures, all we're doing today is, we are looking at this as a rezoning application, essentially to allow greater density than what would be allowed by code. That's really what this application is.
Okay.
So, they're, they're going to have more units here than what the code would allow historically. But in terms of the development part of that process, they've got to go through permitting, it's got to go to the permit desk, it's going to be reviewed by a litany of city departments, including utilities, which would involve sewer and water, and they're not going to be allowed to put a house on top of the sewer line here. They're going to have to address all that.
Okay. Well, yes, I was concerned. It had happened in the past, but I assume that the, it was a lot more lax in 1928 than it is currently.
Boy, I would sure think so, but I don't want to do, I don't want to, you know, verbally damage anybody who made decisions in 1928. I, I don't know. So, and it's, it's not that I'm, I'm trying to over, you know, just kind of overturn your concern, I just want to make sure that it's something that we can address here, which it doesn't sound like we really can, about this house that's on top of a sewer line that's not in a subject property before us.
Yes.
But what's going on on this parcel, I feel very confident telling you that if they take an application in, and there's an easement with a city waterline in it, they can't put a house there.
Okay.
Does that help you?
Sure does.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Oldham was the only person I've signed up to speak. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on S.P.U.D. 1217? Okay. In Commissioner Powers' absence, I'll just say, although this has been continued a number of times, I do remember the Zoom, the Zoom meeting we had, which was one of the most chaotic, remote planning commission meetings we ever had. I think there had, there was more people logged in for that meeting, if I'm remembering that correctly. It was chaos. It really was. And so, to know that we've gone from there to where we are today, which is no one is here, tells me that we've done an awful lot. I don't have any specific concerns about the application. There are no T.E.s provided to us. I don't know if other commissioners have other concerns on this, because like I said, we've talked about this on and off for essentially two years.
I only have like, like one big-picture question, Kelly. If maybe you can respond to it pretty quickly, is, I remember it a little bit, and there's a lot of information in here from 2020 and all of this. Is that resolved? And the reason nobody's here is because, give me the, like, we're good now with all this other stuff from 2019 and 2020?
Yes, sir. Those issues have been completely resolved.
Great.
And, and if I could, just to offer one comment, bit of information in response to Mr. Oldham's concerns.
Yeah.
We are very aware where the storm sewer is, and of course, the city of Oklahoma City was a party to the...
That's what I thought.
...vacation proceeding, and so the city's Public Works Department had an opportunity to review that there is easement that is reserved for that existing storm sewer in the vacation proceeding. It partly is, includes the remaining 50 feet of right-of-way that is there for McKinley Avenue, but also extends into a part of track 1. And then we're also very aware of the location of the sanitary sewer that runs east and west along the southern boundary of track 1. So, we will not be proposing to build any buildings on top of either the sanitary sewer or the storm sewer. So, we're very aware that they're there and where they are located. So, just to offer that bit of information, I thought might be helpful.
No, I appreciate that. That's, I didn't want to, I couldn't remember exactly, but I thought that was part of the litigation issue, so I, like, in terms of them having to be involved in it, but I didn't want to weigh in on that.
Really, the issues in the litigation really related to the ownership of the property that was vacated. So, it wasn't about the utilities, or where they're located, or so on.
Right.
It really related to who was going to end up with title to the vacated property, and that's what has taken this time to get resolved, and has now been resolved through a final judgment of the Oklahoma County District Court.
Got it. Okay. You good, Commissioner LaForte? Any, any other comments on this? Commissioner Clare?
Point of clarification, is McKinley Avenue being relocated to the west?
I don't, no, I don't believe so, but...
McKinley Avenue, the existing paving of McKinley Avenue will stay where it is.
Okay.
There will be no moving of McKinley Avenue, and that is very specifically part of our agreement that we have with the neighbors. So, it will stay where it is.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this? If not, I'd take a motion. Commissioner Powers isn't here, so somebody else is going to have to make it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of S.P.U.D. 1217.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on S.P.U.D. 1217. It's been seconded by Commissioner Clare. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. Now they are. And that item is recommended for approval. Next item is item 22.
This is S.P.U.D. 1399, application to rezone 13790 North I-35 Service Road from CHC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Caitlin Turner, 522 Colacord Drive. The application before you is to rezone the property from CHC to an S.P.U.D. with a C3 base, so maintaining that commercial designation. The application is to permit a pest control company, as well as to permit the existing billboard to remain. There have been no protests. Staff does recommend approval. Subject to a T.E. that the existing billboard should be removed prior to occupancy, which we are unable to agree to. The billboard has been there for many, many years. The applicant does not have the legal right to remove or alter the billboard, so for those reasons, we're unable to agree to it, and we ask for your approval, striking that T.E., and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Your property owner doesn't own the billboard, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Commissioner Pennington, your ward, sir?
I have visited with David about this, and I don't think I have any issues, other than I know we're going to battle about the, the sign code. Maybe if, if staff wouldn't mind just clarifying the positions that the commission has heard, heard it officially, why, why we should do anything different here as far as T.E. 1. Because it sounds to me like if they don't own it, we can't control anything about something they don't own, so...
Well, we, we could not allow the development, which is a different conversation.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Which would trigger, which would prevent us from triggering the need to remove it.
But it's, but it's not, what they're, what the applicant is saying is it's not their sign.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct, and it's, it's, it's in that situation today. They can't develop the CHC without removing the sign. That's a condition of the code. The sign has to be removed to develop the site, or change the zoning to allow the sign.
Got it.
Gotcha. Which is what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, okay. No questions, I'm in support.
Okay. Could, could I make one suggestion, which won't surprise you, even though it's super small and it's by a highway, I still would like to delete 8300.69.
We can agree to that.
Any objection? I don't have anybody signed up to speak, but of course, I'm going to ask, is there anybody who wants to be heard today on item 22, S.P.U.D. 1399? Okay. Seeing nobody? If there's no further discussion from commissioners on this, I'll take a motion from you, Commissioner Pennington.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of S.P.U.D. 1399, and amend the technical evaluations by adding T.E. 2, which will eliminate use unit 8300.69.
And, and you're leaving, you're wanting to leave T.E. 1?
And we're, oh, and eliminate T.E. 1, sorry.
Oh, okay. So, delete T.E. 1 and add T.E. 2, which, which deletes use unit 8300.69.
Yes.
Are you in agreement? Caitlin, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle to approve, recommend approval, SPD 1399, deleting TE1 and adding TE2, deleting 8300.69. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast? Commissioner LaForte, did you cast your vote?
He says he voted in the affirmative.
Go ahead and voice vote for us, Commissioner LaForte. Oh, there we go. And that item is recommended for approval. Item 23 was continued to May the 12th, which brings us to item 24, which we'll go ahead and hear in turn, even though we had to skip two items, let's go ahead and hear that, and then we'll come back to six or eight if somebody showed up.
Eight showed up.
Eight showed up. Let's go ahead and hear 24. Let's hear it.
All right, item 24 is the recommendation for proposed ordinance change relating to advertising and signs, repealing Article 5 of Chapter 3 of the municipal code. It also amends several articles of Chapter 59 of the code, updates sign regulation in design districts, deletes provisions regarding non-accessory signs, authorizes administrative approval for certificates of approval for murals, enacts a new Article 36, excuse me, 16, sign regulations of Chapter 59 of the municipal code. And Lisa Kronister, it will, the Assistant Planning Director is going to introduce this for us. Also some slides if, for us to use to discuss. I know we discussed it last time, but we have materials for discussion today as well.
Lisa, if I could, I'm going to jump in just for a minute, and, and I should have done this when we were doing the continuances, but I want to bring something to the attention of the commission, and I want to discuss it before Ms. Kronister presents. So Commissioner Powers, who is not here today, requested that this item be continued in her absence, and the basis for that request, the continuance, she put into an email, I'm going to read some excerpts of that email into the record, so we can sort of talk about it. Basically says that she's prepared to offer comments, encouraged to hold off because the item was just being set for hearing, she had a number of issues that she wanted to discuss and she thought should be carefully considered. Says that the effort dates back to 2018, when she, when she served on the selection committee for the RFP, for professional consultant services to the development code update, and the consultant was chosen, the process was underway, she participated in the stakeholder advisory team and began work with the accelerated portion of the code update, the sign code. She also stipulates that basically when the code was adopted in 2015, that she was involved in the process of crafting and adopting Plan OKC. Took years of meetings and hearings and discussions and collaboration. She's the only member of the planning commission that served throughout the process and felt that, you know, she needed to provide the background, experience, and continuity to this before it is recommended for adoption by the city council. So basically, she had some additional comments and questions she wanted to share with the planning commission on the site code update, based on her participation in the process, and was unable to attend today for reasons that were well beyond her control.
So Mr. Chairman, thank you for, for bringing that up first, and I didn't want to bring it up at the beginning of the meeting either, because there were so many people here waiting. So now was the time to talk about whether to continue it. And I think you are, are you still against continuing it for what I saw in the email? And if so, maybe mention, how strongly do you feel? Might ask the staff. I'm inclined to, well, very respectful of you, if you, if you feel strongly, very respectful of you, however, at the same time, Ms. Powers has been on the commission a long time, and all those things she says she means for the best interest of the city in this process, so.
Yeah, well, I was not aware there was anybody else on the email.
Oh, God.
Yeah, it got forwarded to us, I guess, somebody did.
From staff or someone?
I thought it was from staff, or you, or her, or something. Seen the whole thing.
Okay, all right, well, the, the challenge is this. Yes, my opinion is pretty strong. What I think the difference is, is that if we had a case, let's say that was in Ward 8, and I had been deeply involved with neighbors and discussions, and I had gone to neighborhood meetings that no one else was privy to, and I'd worked with the applicant and all that, and for some reason I couldn't be here, and I felt like it made a lot of sense for me to relay all that, I might ask the applicant to take that continuance. And I think that's something that the commission pretty broadly would respect, as we would with any kind of Ward-related issue that a commissioner has been involved in. My comments to Commissioner Powers were simply that I felt like continuing an item of general concern, when we are a recommending body, was kind of a dangerous precedent to set, that it, so if, if, and I'll just, so if Commissioner Clare has gone next meeting and he, we continued it, but he wanted to make comments, now he's not here, do we continue it again? And, and where does that sort of end? I think in, in items like this, that's why there's nine people that are chosen to sit up here. This isn't a Ward-related case, it's an item of general ordinance and of general concern. So what I'm compelled by is that we, we do have one person who's signed up to speak, we announce a public agenda, we put it out, people make changes, plans, et cetera, to come be heard, et cetera, and then we continue it. Typically, the reason is, is the case isn't ripe, because they need to talk to the neighbors more, or the applicant is still working through major problems with staff, or whatever those circumstances are perfectly appropriate. I, I don't, I don't know what more this process could have had to make it ripe for us to hear it, even in the absence of one or more of us, so long there's enough to hear it. As the email articulates, she's been through countless hearings, I participated in that process, I know that Asa Highsmith participated in that process, I know that Commissioner Hinkle participated in that process. There were tons of stakeholders, people, et cetera, that, that did all that, which kind of brought it to where it is. It's been through other commissions, there's a moratorium in place that prevents some development of new signs, which, this is a personal thing, but that bothers me, that people can't use their property, because we've got a moratorium in place that could potentially, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong on this, Jeff, but, is that if we continue it, that would either have to be extended or it would lapse. So it just creates a lot of complications, and I, and I just, I feel like that's something we should be really considerate of, in addition to the request from a commissioner that we continue the item. That was why I wanted to have the conversation about whether or not we should have the continuance or not. And I'm, I'm not, this is absolutely no disrespect to Commissioner Powers, because just to be on the record about it, if it were me, I'd feel the same way. You, if I can't make it, you guys should have the, have the hearing and go on. I mean, that's what you're here to do, that's why there's nine of us. So those are my feelings on it. But I am welcome to your feedback and open to anybody who feels differently.
I will just say that I am in complete 100% agreement with you. The only thing that gives me pause is Commissioner Powers did last, this, when this was before us last time, just as set as a hearing, she did express that she had thoughts to share and wanted to do so at that time, and, you know.
We didn't hear.
It was, it was recommended that, those can wait, you know, those can wait until, so that's the, that's the only thing that gives me pause on that. But I, I, I agree with you.
Anybody else have thoughts? I mean, I'm, I'm curious.
Me being an integral part of this since the beginning, the amount of work the city has put into this to where we're at today, right here, they listened to commercial sign people, billboard people, restaurant people, developers, I mean, down the line, they listened and they heard, and they crafted this code to be what all of those people thought was adequate for a sign code. And once again, no disrespect to Commissioner Powers, this is good. What we have here was worked hard on, got to give my hats off to Lisa and Jeff and the planning department for all the work that they put into this, and I don't know what Commissioner Powers would add that would compel any of us to change what has taken two years to write.
With that, if I may, that, that's probably what gets me over the end, is maybe the other way around. The fact that she was so involved might speak to the other direction, is that, well, she's very much been a part of this and provided commentary to the staff and to, all along the way, so it should be in here, and this is where it's ended up. If there's still something else left that she feels she needs to say, she of all people ought to have, this goes to the city council, right?
It does.
So she, you know, is one of the people that should have access, not just to her own council, but the staff and the mayor, or whoever she wants, if there was anything else left that she missed out being able to add today. It seems appropriate to move forward.
Well, this is decision time, so if anybody else feels differently, speak up, or let's make the decision we're going to move forward.
I'll go ahead and, and just make the motion, and we'll see where the commission is. I move that we continue this item to the next meeting.
Okay, which would be May the 12th?
May 12th.
Okay. So I have a motion to recommend continuing the item to May the 12th.
No second.
I'm waiting to see, is there?
No second.
Okay, so am I not getting a second, Paula? Okay. So if that's true, then the motion would, would not, it would fail for failure to obtain a second, so it fails there. If that's the case, if there's not going to be a second, then we need to hear the item. Okay, okay. Let's do that. Ms. Kronister, thank you, and I apologize.
No problem. Lisa Kronister, Assistant Planning Director, I have a, an abbreviated presentation from last time to both remind you what's in the ordinance and, and communicate to anybody in the room now and watching at home. Okay, so, yeah, so the whole reason we're doing the sign code update is because it's part of our zoning code update, which has been in process for several years now, as Commissioner Powers noted, the consultant was selected in 2018, and we have been working with that team and stakeholders to craft not just the sign code, but, but all of the rest of the zoning code. Hopefully, this commission will be seeing some information relative to it by the end of the year. The, the purpose of, of the comprehensive plan, well, the purpose of the, of doing the code update is to help implement the policies described in Plan OKC, which is to basically get the types of development we want and to make it easy to get that type of development. Plan OKC had specific policies related to signs. It said plainly, adopt new, new sign code standards. It recommended that we look at ways to reduce sign clutter, improve aesthetics, restrict or eliminate new billboards, and consider new limits on size, height, and number of After the, when the, a new consultant was selected for Phase 2, we had a different consultant for Phase 1, who looked at the comprehensive plan and our existing code, and identified things that needed to change about it. They recommended, you know, we get to a highly graphic and user-friendly layout that would make it easier for residents and businesses to use. It recommended we do everything we can to make more clear administrative procedures, and it was one of the first documents that recommended that we needed to create a content-neutral sign code. Why is content neutrality important? There have been cases, law, legal cases throughout the country in the last six, seven years that have quest, increasingly questioned cities' abilities to regulate signage based on content. Our existing sign code is organized on definitions of accessory signs and non-accessory signs. So if your sign has messaging or graphics related to the nature of your business or use on the property, it's an accessory sign. If it has messaging or imaging not related to the use of the property, then it's considered a non-accessory sign, so more commonly known as advertising. But the, so with all the court cases going on, the city was involved in one of the cases, that Knutson versus City of Oklahoma City in 2019, and in that case, the municipal councillor's office represented to the court that, hey, we're already updating our zoning code, we're already planning to update our sign code, we will update it as soon as possible and get to a content-neutral solution that complies with Reed versus Town of Gilbert. So if we are no longer regulating based on the definitions of accessory and non-accessory signs, we focus on what has always been the traditional basis of sign regulation, and that is physical characteristics, size, height, number of signs, whether they light up, what they're made of. These are already things we all, that we regulate in the sign code now, but the new sign code focuses on these physical characteristics exclusively. To develop the new code, we hosted a variety of focus groups, one-on-one meetings, meetings with, we had council briefings, we met with planning commissioners, we met with artists, we met with our stakeholder advisory committee, stakeholder advisory team, which was mentioned Commissioner Powers has been a part of, and we received tons of feedback related to, you know, making the code easier to read, improving code enforcement, and providing for some type of administrative flexibility. We heard that a lot. So after, so we, we took all this feedback, and our first draft that we circulated was toward the end of 2020, and we reviewed that with, at a planning commission study session, we reviewed it with our design review committees, we circled back around with the sign industry and with property owners, property managers, outdoor advertising industry, reviewed with them where we had ended up at that first draft. Then we collected all of their reactions and comments to it, and we spent the summer of 2021 addressing them, working through some details of some more specific issues, and then we reissued a, a final. You know, when you're, when you're doing projects, you have the final, and then you have the final final, and then you have the revised final final. We, we collected a final draft at the end of the summer, we posted it for public comment, we took that draft to planning commission study session to articulate where we had ended up with everybody again. And then we took the feedback we got from the September public comment draft, we incorporated it into a new draft, and it's that draft that went to the design review committees and commissions, it's that draft that went to the planning commission development review committee. And then we took the comments from, from that process and incorporated it into the draft you see today, the March 2022 draft. So what is in this new sign code? First, we think it has many benefits. We think we've created a highly graphic and user-friendly document, we think it will result in fewer dilapidated signs, we think we've tailored the sign standards better, there was concern from many stakeholders that if we're not regulating on content, that all signs are just going to be advertising, and there'll be nothing we can do about it. But we spent quite a bit of time studying just how much of a percentage are people using of their sign allowance. It was pretty small, so that's one reason we proposed to reduce some of the sign, sign area allowances. We think it'll create an easier process for, for murals, residents will be better shielded and distanced from EMD signs, there'll be smaller, shorter conditional use billboards in some districts, we've created a process for master sign plans that will allow the planning director to approve minor modifications without applicants having to go to board of adjustment. The new code will move everything that's in Chapter 3, Article 5, it will move it all to a new Article 16 in Chapter 59. A lot of things have, have been moved and not specifically changed. The new code is organized around six different types of signs, attached signs, freestanding signs, billboards, murals, incidental signs, miscellaneous signs. Most, with few exceptions, the design district, sign is requirement stay the same, we're just, and they supersede the new Article 16. The Brick Town regulations were the only ones in Chapter 3, and they are being relocated to the new Article 16. to the new Article Sixteen. So the existing code is text and paragraphs and letters and numbers. The new code organizes all the information into easier-to-read tables, and it provides informational graphics and renderings for all of the sign types. The new sign code organizes freestanding signs using street typologies that are identified in Plan OKC, and that's to recognize that slower, quieter streets have smaller signs, and larger, busier, more intense streets have the bigger signs. And in the, as the code, the rest of the code update rolls out, you'll see we're using street typology to organize other elements. So some specific changes to run through really quickly, so billboards obviously was a big focus. Billboards used to be defined as non-accessory signs, you know, they were defined by what they said. They were, in the existing code, allowed on all street types, they were allowed in CCBD and CHC zoning, and there were certain conditional uses for C3, DBD, and I-1. In the new code, billboards are defined exclusively by physical feature, they're allowed only on certain street types, they're not allowed in CCBD or CHC zoning. The conditional use standards have changed to a larger lot size, smaller sign, shorter sign. The new code specifically prohibits PUDs and SPUDs from increasing sign standards, including billboards. So you can still, if your base zoning in your SPUD, if it allows, if your base zoning already allows a billboard, and if you meet, otherwise meet the distance and size requirements, then you can have a billboard in a PUD or SPUD. Master sign plans, in the old code, if you can't meet the regulation, your only avenue is to go to board of adjustment, which costs time and money. But we've created a master sign plan, which is a process other municipalities have used, and that allows, through an application for the planning director, to approve small changes, generally 10% to 15%. It also, there's also a process by which the planning commission can request the submission of the master sign plan as part of the PUD process. Attached signs, the old code tied the size of a sign to the width of the building and how far back it was from the street. The sign areas that were, that are allowed are 15% to 20% of the wall area, they're huge. And we found in our research that most property owners are using just a fraction of what they're allowed. So the new code will make the sign proportionate to the size of the wall, the area allowed will be much less than what's allowed now, but when we did our analysis, we only found one company, one business that was using more than 10% of the wall area. Things like allowing multiple signs per wall in all zoning districts has been a recurring issue, especially in some of our design review districts. Freestanding signs, the, oops, the new code, as I was explaining, will tie freestanding signs to the zoning district and the type, and the street type, the number of signs to the street type, everything about freestanding signs will be tied to the type of street and not just the length of the frontage. The existing code requires landscaping at the base of all freestanding signs, the new code will eliminate that requirement, that was a request. We heard a lot from industry and property owners and property managers that it's difficult to get inspections in time, it's difficult to keep the landscaping up. And then the new code will, we are still allowing pole signs, you can have a pole sign or you can have a monument sign. We're incentivizing monument signs by allowing them to be a little bit taller and a little bit larger than pole signs, but both are still permitted in the new code. Code enforcement, we worked really hard to improve the effectiveness of code enforcement and give them some more tools. Specifically, the new code authorizes the city to remove dilapidated signs under the same statute that is used to remove dilapidated structures. The new code is more specific about the time of compliance for abandoned signs and what actually constitutes not maintaining good repair, again, to help our code inspectors, give them more specificity when they're issuing notices and citations, and assessing when something needs to be removed. Murals, the existing murals definition is completely, is almost completely based on content, so we really had to update it, and murals can only be, there wasn't any explicit direction that staff could approve murals, which added to approval times. Also, text was limited, and we heard from artists for years that they wanted more area for text. So we've created a process by which arts commission can recommend to the planning director who can approve more text. Murals are now defined with a content-neutral definition, and art staff and design review staff can approve murals. EMD signs, again, are relative to street type, we've increased the separation distance from residentially zoned properties, they are allowed on any street type, we've adjusted the limits of Level Two and Level Three in certain districts, and we've required light directing louvers on EMD billboard signs. So again, a recap of the benefits. You know, did, you know, we did hear from everybody, and we tried our best to incorporate everybody's feedback, as with many things. Did everybody get everything they wanted? Of course not, but we do think we have been able to achieve, one, compliance with court rulings, and, two, some concrete benefits for residents and businesses. So with that, I will answer questions, and there may be people here to speak.
I do have one person.
I do have one person that signed up to speak, but first, thank you for all your work. Yeah, kudos to you in a big way for everything that you and everybody else who's been involved has done. I mean, you know, from having these stakeholder meetings via Zoom because of what was going on, and still trying to move all that forward, and getting all the feedback, and I remember the first stakeholder meeting was super chaotic, and it was a wide range of opinions about how it should go and all, and so, but I think ultimately, there's two things that I think, or three things that I really like about what the end result was. One is the enforcement on dilapidated signs is long overdue, it's a huge advantage to the city, and really needed some teeth to be able to do it. The other is making it more appropriate based on how signs are measured, where they're applicable, all that's a huge improvement. And then finally, allowing pole signs but incentivizing monument signs is the right way to do it, and it allows people to have a larger sign, and it gives people like us a tool as well, when we're having these types of discussions in the future, to be able to say, you can have a larger sign, just get rid of the pole. And I think that's a great way to go about it. So all in all, I appreciate having been involved in the process, playing a small part, but you all played a huge part and did a ton of work, and I know that we all really appreciate that. Anybody else have comments they want to share from the commission or questions before I ask, anybody wants to speak on this item or be heard?
If you get tired of doing this presentation, I can do it for you next time.
I'm told that the Chambers AV person, he has offered to do it.
Yeah.
If I'm ever unable to.
I think Hinkle would be a good Plan C. Anybody else have comments on this or questions? Okay, all right, well, I do have one person signed up to speak, so I'll ask Bill Condon, or you want to come up and be heard on this?
Bill Condon, with Lamar Advertising, 123 50th Street. Yeah, I would like to echo your same comments. I know Lisa's done a great job navigating a lot of, a lot of interest through this whole, through this whole process. And for the most part, Lamar is in favor of moving forward with the new, with the new sign code. Do have a few follow-up questions, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here. After having an opportunity to view, I believe, last month, late last month, when Mr. White was here, there was a few things during that presentation that just wanted to kind of clarify, and maybe it's more of a question for Lisa, and I can slide or whichever.
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
I know that my real estate manager had an opportunity to send a, send an email in just on a few comments, and I just wanted to follow back up with that. One was regarding the PUDs and SPUDs. I know that specifically with the staff report with varying sign standards and prohibiting varying sign standards, what we were just recommending is that if just the billboards are prohibited in SPUDs and PUDs, and the reason why I say that is that, as we've learned over the years, the, you know, we feel that it was a circumvent, and so it's some, we may need a little bit more color as far as on a master sign plan as it relates to PUDs and SPUDs, so that's, you know, I guess the question is, is there a way that a billboard through the master sign plan could actually be approved in a PUD or a SPUD?
Let me look that up. The, a master sign plan allows you to vary the height of a sign, the size of a sign, and to get an extra freestanding sign, specifically an extra monument sign.
Okay.
So it doesn't, and those are specified, like I was describing, the new sign code identifies six different types of signs. So billboards, while they are a freestanding sign, they are a specific sign type, and the master sign plan does not provide for modification of the billboard.
Gotcha. Yeah, because I know in the presentation that we've watched, and there was times where it was saying they were prohibited, and, you know, the recommendation was that, did we just go ahead and say that they're prohibited unless, unless that, unless we don't see what would prevent that, that type of language?
In earlier drafts of the sign code, the presentations and language were that PUDs and SPUDs could not be used to vary.
Right.
Sign regulate, I mean, that was, that was, that was our message and our thought and our language for actually quite a long time, but through the process, through comments, we realized there may be very good reasons why planning commission might want to reduce, might want to restrict some of the requirements, and that restriction would absolutely be in the spirit of the comp plan and the sign code. So we did change the messaging and the code to make it clear that you can modify it, you can make it less restrictive, or you can make it more restrictive, any of the requirements more restrictive, but not less restrictive.
Gotcha. One other is, regarding the C3 zoning, I know that it's slimming down to 200 square feet, and I think originally it's 300. One of the concerns that we have there is, we have probably close to operate 200 signs on C3 property, and then the event that, I know it appears that you can rebuild if you needed to, but if you had to relocate to accommodate a landowner, would that, would that be allowed? So there are many a times that we have, working with landowners, that if they're developing their property to relocate on the property, would that be considered a new sign, if you will?
I am not sure.
I can answer that. If you're on a C3 property, once it develops, the sign has to go, there wouldn't be a relocation for it.
What's that?
On a C3 property, once the property develops, the sign is supposed to go. So there wouldn't be a moving of billboard on a C3 property if it was going to develop at all, I mean, by code.
Right, yes, thank you, yes. Property shall be undeveloped when the sign is erected, and if it's subsequently developed, the property owner shall remove the billboard prior to occupancy.
And then last was regards to Level One EMD. We have a handful of locations that are close to other digital signage that I believe is now, I know the term on-premise is going away, but if, if one of those sides wanted to be upgraded to digital, would that existing on-premise, let me give you a perfect example. The Mathis Brothers currently operates some on-premise signage that it looks like a billboard. We have, we operate locations close to there that, that, that would, that wouldn't be allowed going forward on the new code to upgrade to digital, and I wanted to see if, if those signs are going to be considered billboards from a spacing standpoint wise.
Yes, because billboards are no longer defined by content, it's by physical structure. We've talked before, I think, the various combinations of us, that the Mathis Brothers sign, in terms of the new sign code, it would be considered a billboard because it's, it's greater than the allowance allowed for.
Right.
And a freestanding sign. And then there's a billboard, what's now considered a billboard some distance north.
Right.
That's EMD.
Right.
And they could stay, so they're both EMD now, right, the one north?
Well, one side is, the other's not. So if you ever wanted to go, in essence, upgrade the other side.
Well, right, right, right now, billboards can be changed to EMD, just as of right, and we're not, we're not impeding that. They would still need to meet the new spacing.
Right.
And shielding, spacing from residential, shielding from neighborhoods.
Right.
But otherwise, you, there's nothing impeding upgrading existing billboards to EMD, other than distance from residential and the shielding.
Okay, all right. Anybody got any other questions for me?
I don't. It sounds like you're generally supportive of it.
Yes.
And I was actually flipping through this as she was talking in the section about billboards and trying to follow along with, like, thinking about these issues as they would arise, how they would be ferreted out based on the code, and I mean, I think the information she's giving you based on what I'm reading is what I saw as well.
Right.
I would think spacing too would come into play because the spacing has been enlarged.
Yes.
Right, so.
Well, no, the space, billboard spacing is the same as it is now.
It is staying the same as, oh, I was thinking it was.
Yes, in the new code, it's the same.
I thought it was a little bit more, it's the same.
It's the same.
Okay, all right. So, I mean, other than that, that was the only other thing that I could point to that that would have come into play when you're talking about moving a sign or something like that, but otherwise it's.
Yeah, and to your point, I mean, the way we approached it is actually the inventory that we currently have, and then layering on the actual, the new code and see, obviously, the impact, and so those were, those were really the three items that kind of, and really it's from, really from the last meeting, it's kind of just talking through and looking through the various situations, what we may want to do of upgrading a static location to digital, but if what was originally an on-premise is now a billboard, could cause, you know, could cause some heartburn, and as far as the opportunity to increase it to a digital.
Okay, well, thanks for being with us today, Mr. Condon, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners for staff on this? No? Okay, well, we got five here, so if somebody wants to make a motion, we can vote without Commissioner La Forge, but.
I'm happily to move approval on this, and we'll wait till Rusty gets back so he can vote too. I'm glad we've got this far.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hinkle.
There, I did.
Okay, so I have a motion to recommend approval to city council for adoption of the ordinance. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, again, thanks for your work, Lisa, great job. So going back through, we have a couple items that had. we have a couple items that had to be skipped. First one was Item 6. Is Item 6 here?
Hi, Robert Angelo, 1025 Northwest Grand Boulevard, representing Jake Minton.
Thank you, Mr. Angelo. Tell us what you need to know about your application.
The owners of the property would like to change the zoning to be more conforming with the neighborhood. They're on the northwest corner, directly across the street on the northeast corner. It's already zoned industrial, and they do butt up to the fire station to the west of them. And the southeast corner, those offices there, they're already zoned commercial. They have not identified a use yet for the property, but would like to get a jump start on changing the zoning.
You're saying the property to the north there has been rezoned commercial?
The Mintons would like to change the zoning on theirs on the northwest corner.
Right. But the property directly to the north of this is residential?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Pennington, this is your ward. Do you have comments or questions for the applicant?
Yes, several questions. You, you mentioned that there's industrial zoned property? I'm not seeing that. Is that, which corner, I'm looking at the corner of Britton and, and Bryant, and, and the subject property that you're trying to rezone would be C3, and then directly across the street is O2, then I'm seeing residential on the other two corners. Is that, am I mistaken?
When Mr. Minton looked it up on the county assessor's site, it said that it was industrial.
Can we get clarification from staff on that?
County, county assessor, not particularly relevant for the purposes of determining what the city's...
The northeast corner is under consideration for rezoning to industrial. It's a PUD that you have already seen and recommended approval on. It's not going to be heard at council till May, though.
Got it.
So, I think it's referenced in your staff report. If approved, that would become moderate industrial.
But there's nothing there today that's, like, that's been approved and is done and all that.
Right. Which could, it very well could change it. We don't know that the city council's...
Right. It will not, and it's been continued at city council until May, as far as I know.
I, I am concerned. Have you visited with the neighbors to the north at all about this change?
No.
I'm, I, I don't feel comfortable moving this forward until we've had that conversation, but I promise you that even if we were to vote today and approve it today, that you would run into this exact same problem in city council. So, I would recommend, and I'm happy to help, that you take a continuance now, that we go visit with the neighbors. I'm happy to be a part of those conversations if it's helpful. And I also think you would, you should visit with staff about the possibility of changing this to a PUD or an SPUD, so that we have some more flexibility about protecting your neighbors to the north.
Correct. Okay.
So...
We would like a continuance, absolutely.
And I, I don't know if you all have any other comments as well?
I don't have any objection to that. I prefer that you help them talk to the neighbor. So, if there's no objection to that and the applicant's in agreement, do we want to continue it to the first meeting in May? It should be the 12th, is that what you're thinking?
That's fine with me, if that's fine with you.
So, I give you time, okay, and then we'll see what we have to do from there? Okay. So, we just make the motion if you want to make it.
Sure. I move that we continue PC 10806 until the May 12th meeting.
Okay. I have a motion to continue PC 10806 to May the 12th. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that item is continued. Thank you very much, Mr. Angelo.
Thank you.
Last item on our items for separate consideration is back to item number eight, and I didn't mean to jump over you last time there, Mr. Butler, so go ahead and read that for us.
Yeah, item number eight is case PUD 1846, application to rezone 12610 North Mustang Road from RA, PUD 1846.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Aaron Winters. I'm the owner, and I want to rezone 12610 North Mustang Road from RA, single-family, one-acre rural residential to a PUD for a mini storage.
Okay. Commissioner Claire, this is your ward, sir. Do you have comments or questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the south boundary line and the setbacks on the south boundary, and so is your intent to place your buildings at the property line?
It was originally. We had a protester, Mike Love, owns the, he just recently bought that from Claude Cypress, and he changed the, changed the zoning just recently, actually, and he put in some multifamily homes. I think there was a C3 originally. He changed a section of it from, most of it's still C3, but a section of it he put to multifamily homes. And I know Mike, I gave him a series, but he didn't mention it to me. Then he sent a letter and said he wanted setbacks, so I called him, we talked to him, and we did it. So, it's, it's in here. We gave him setback, a 10-foot setback, which is what he asked for, and then he wants trees along there, which is also included.
Okay. That's under the landscaping provision 9.2 of the MDS that I see, and then also the other one that he's referencing is 9.4. See that, Commissioner Claire? That's a five-foot landscape buffer with a minimum of nine landscaping points, installed for every 25 linear feet. It also says, "Or use of three-inch caliber trees," so...
Not really crazy about the five-foot landscape buffer. That doesn't allow for canopy trees to thrive. So, I don't know if you have some flexibility. It could take that to 15?
That's, the, the problem I have is the entrance is pretty narrow. We start moving over, we, we lose a spot to get into the property. We have on the other side, the entrance, and, and he originally told me, he was, when I first talked to him, he'd be okay if we just made the wall hardy board all the way down there, which we also are going to do. So, he'll just have a wall there, and then we'll put trees alongside of it. But I, I wouldn't mind doing it. I've got 33 acres, we could go that in, but I, I'm just, I'm stuck at the entrance because there's a...
Easement, yeah, you've got...
Yeah, it's just, I'm kind of tough to get in there because of the, that creek. And then on the other side of that creek is all homes, just like two-and-a-half acre lots. They don't want me coming in on their side. They don't want me coming inside the creek. It's like I was talking, it's Tommy Crabtree, he's bought the lot there, and he was making, asking me for sure that we were going to stay on this side of the creek, which I told me we were. So, 15 foot's going to be tough.
10. Can you do 10?
So, here's my problem with it. I'll just be honest with you. It was C3 the whole time we were here.
Yeah.
And he's fussing about me building this mini storage, and he's putting it in a frickin' shopping mall. I mean, I get that he's frustrated about there being a mini storage next to him, but he's going to be behind a Walgreens.
Yeah, well, but there is going to be a multifamily component.
Yeah, but there'll be all...
Where, where is the multifamily component, Commissioner Claire? Is that, is that part of, is my understanding, and maybe, maybe I misunderstood, that that was part of 1315?
Yeah, 1315. And PUD 1919's like...
It says 13, no, it just tells us 1315 and PUD 1919. It says undeveloped in storage, but let me, maybe I missed it in the, oh, it's, yeah, it says, "South of the site is SPUD 1315, approved in July 2021 for duplex development along North Mustang Road."
Right next door to an oilfield site and a car wash, giant industrial Walgreens location, and he's not making them fence because he owns them. But he wants me to fence, so he'd have to put his fence in, to be honest with you. He was required to put a fence there, and that'll be my...
We, we, Mr. Winter, I'm indifferent about you and Mr. Love, quite candidly. I'm concerned about the people who are going to live and reside in those duplexes, and I bet that's what Commissioner Claire's really thinking about, too. No disrespect, I just don't care.
No, 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 that's a good point.
We're just thinking about what those people are going to have to look at and how that might impact their use of the property. And our other concern is always this, I don't know when you're going to build that development, and you may not end up building it, and the next guy comes along after they've built those homes and people are living there, and then, and then here it comes. So, what we're trying to think through is how do we make those two uses compatible?
I don't mind doing it. I just don't think I can. I mean, it's just going to be, it's going to be tough because we're interested in there. I will say this much, on the back of his property, he is called for site fence. So, there'll be a site fence, there'll be the trees, then there'll be our mini storage. He won't, he won't be looking at the trees proper or the mini storage proper, he'll be looking at his own site fence.
Again, to our chair's point, we don't know when you're going to build yours, there's no guarantee, and there's no guarantee when he's going to build his. So, we have to be able to accommodate on both.
I'll, I'll do 10, if we can get an exception for the entrances. So, you can, can you go to the drawing where the, we drive in? Okay. You see up there where the, where the drive comes in?
Yes.
You see we have some trees drawn up there in the right of way and...
So, in my opinion, those don't do any good. I'd rather see those on the south side. So, my, my suggestion would be you take that drive and you move it, if those parking spaces that you have shown, those five perpendicular, perpendicular parking spaces are 20 feet long, you have the ability to shift that whole drive approximately 15 to 20 foot to the, to the north.
I, I, I would, but you see that 100-foot easement there? Right in there is, is a creek. It's not shown on here, but I can't move that to the north. That's why it's wedged up there as close as it is.
Well, I'm saying that you would move, you would, you would need to move the, the parking spaces, and you move the drive, so the north, the north side of the drive would abut that, and then you would have to find a new place for those parking spaces. I think it could be done.
If it can, that's great, but I think if I move to the north, I'll be in a creek.
No, I'm not.
The entrance will be. You see how we have the buildings kind of running along the easement there?
Yes.
I mean, I, I don't mind doing it, I just don't know if I can.
I might make a suggestion, just because I don't want you to feel like you're pressured into making a decision. I mean, I have no objection to you asking the applicant to take two weeks and talk about it.
Yeah, I think you, I'm not sure, yeah, who your designer is worked on the lane this out, but I would encourage you to go back to them and, and ask them to take another run at it, to at least achieve a 10-foot buffer on the south side, immediately adjacent that, that 1315 PUD, that multifamily.
And I think if I'm not mistaken, to 1315, and looking at the map, does, it doesn't run the whole length.
No, it's, it's basically with the exhibit up here, it's just that first section of buildings.
And that's the only thing we're concerned about.
Yeah.
I'm not concerned about 1919. I'm concerned about 1350. So, to his point, I mean, we're not, not trying to make it difficult on you, I promise, but we're, that 1350, or 1315, excuse me, because it doesn't take up the whole run of that, I think that he's right, there's probably a way to, to move that around. I'd take the two weeks and give you a chance to talk with Commissioner Claire about it and...
And, and we do this with storage facilities all the time.
Listen, I don't, it's not, it's not the land.
Yeah.
I'm not fussing about the 10-foot versus 5-foot. We, the 10-foot, I'm, I have a problem, a problem with. We can, we can give it. I got plenty of land that could be on there. The issue is, I mean, it's like I'm landlocked to go that way. The issue just is if I can keep my entrance, because I'm, I've got a set place to get in.
I, I think you can, and I'm going to challenge you and your, your engineer, your site designer to, to rework that, at least review, look at some other options, if you're willing to...
Come back in two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay.
It's May the 12th, Mr. Winter, just so you know.
That'll be a month.
Well, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's April 28th.
April 28th. You're right.
Yep.
There's that. Yeah, good thing we've moved a lot of stuff to May the 12th. 422, 428 it is. Good, good thing you guys are paying attention to what I'm doing over here.
Mr. Zitzow did not object earlier.
Yeah, and he, you would have thought he would have.
So, there, the staff's asked me to mention to you, I already continued twice. And we didn't, we didn't get the protesters the day before, but they seem to think that I can get the driveway there.
Okay.
Just by moving 10 foot over.
Okay.
So, I guess I can agree to 10 foot instead of 5 foot?
How many things did we continue to May the 12th? Two?
Two weeks to May the 12th.
Allows more time for productive discussion. That's, that's on me. I apologize.
Okay, so I'll add a, add a TE.
So, we would just make that TE1?
Yeah.
Okay. This may come to some surprise. I don't have anybody signed up to speak. Just so you know, Commissioner Claire.
Okay. So, I'm going to ask for 10-foot landscape buffer with canopy trees, 20 feet on center for the length of SPUD 1315. Are you in agreement with that?
How about for the length of, yeah, length of 1315? Yeah, yeah, great. Yeah, that sounds awesome. Yeah. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Sure. Okay. So, I'll move to recommend approval of PUD. Is there any other discussion on this?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Recommend approval of PUD 1846, adding TE1, that the applicant shall provide a 10-foot landscape buffer with canopy trees spaced 20 feet on center on the south boundary for the length of SPUD 1315.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1846, subject to the technical evaluation, one as read into the record by Commissioner Claire. Wait for Paul's efforting technology to catch up with us.
Thank you.
It's not giving us an option.
Paul, it's still on the deferred motion on mine.
This is Planning Commission's suspense, Mr. Winter. This is what we do, try to leave you in suspense.
Come in. Your voice vote?
Yeah, I just, I had, okay, I had the motion by Commissioner Claire. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Commissioner Claire, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Privet?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
Commissioner La Forge?
Aye.
I also vote aye. All votes have been cast, and that item is recommended for approval, subject to technical evaluation as amended and read into the record. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last item we had for separate consideration, so we'll move on to additional items. Planning Commission committees? Anybody? Nope, no DRC, huh? Planning Commission members, Commissioner Claire? Nothing for me. Commissioner Privet? Commissioner Hinkle? Commissioner Pennington? Commissioner La Forge? Okay. Planning Department?
Nothing for me, other than I have parking validations if you need one.
Excellent. I parked in the spot labeled Mayor. Is that cool?
It's not labeled Mayor anymore. It's just...
Oh, that's weird. Development Services? Municipal counselor. Citizens to be heard. I'll just say, if, if I'm ever gone, please vote with or without me. So, that's, that's my, my two cents on that. I'll eat that cooking. So, appreciate everybody's feedback there. If there's no other discussion, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much.